Okay, it's four o'clock. I'm gonna call the commission meeting of April 25th, four o'clock, together. And can we have real call?
Sure. Mayor Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
And Commissioner Ryan.
If everyone will stand who are able, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance and have a moment of silence. (Pleading) Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no awards and proclamations. We do have Citizens Forum next. If there's anyone here who would like to come to the microphone and talk about five minutes on anything that is not on the agenda, free to do that.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Kevin Royce Fire Chief, just want to take a couple of minutes and introduce you to our newest firefighters or employees. On Friday, April 15th, Salina Fire Department graduated four firefighter EMTs to join our ranks. These individuals went through six weeks of recruit training on such areas as fire suppression, rescue, and EMS skills. Not only did they learn these technical skills, but they were also taught the city of Salina's organizational values and ethical principles. And there's only three of them here today. As usual, we were set to come up here, and one got a call and had to leave. So with that, I'll introduce you to firefighter Casey Hainlein, firefighter Tanner Gertner, firefighter Daniel Rosen, as your newest Salina firefighter. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. It's welcome to you, to Salina. The next thing on the agenda is consent agenda. If there's anything that anyone would like to have removed or amended, go ahead.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of April 18th, 2016.
Okay, if there's anything any commissioner would like to be removed or amended from the consent agenda, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move acceptance of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same time. Okay, we're going to move on down to administration, 7.1.
Item 7.1, first reading ordinance number 16-10829, amending Chapter 31, Articles 1 through 10 of the Salina Code pertaining to the property maintenance code.
Jim.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. As you recall, our past two weeks, we had a couple of study sessions. In conjunction with that, this process also began about the same time back in 2014, September 2014, looking at changes and what needed to be updated or revised in the property maintenance code, which had not been revised in its entirety since July of 2013. Chapter 31 has as its foundation the International Property Maintenance Code. And as we know in our study sessions, the international code body is updated every three years. This process is the same with the International Property Maintenance Code. There's an update every three years through the international code community. Many stakeholders are involved, code enforcement officials throughout the international community, many interested parties, and so that's where we get to these updates. So in overviewing and looking through what we had in effect, it was time to update, so to speak. We had some definitions that needed to be updated, some that need to be clarified, some that were no longer applicable, things like that. As we know, our strong neighborhoods start and they continue to prosper with vibrant communities and with quality properties. We also know the city feels very strongly in having and providing strong, vibrant neighborhoods throughout the community. And as a result of this, our property owners are required to maintain private property to a certain standard. The standard is what we're reflecting upon today is international, as its root, the International Property Maintenance Code, which is our property maintenance code known as Chapter 31. The purpose of updating this code is to provide the most up-to-date standards as possible, and it leads to the desired outcomes of the city. This is going to include maintaining our property's fee free from our trash and debris, grass and weeds, over eight inches in height, graffiti, trees overhanging sidewalks, vehicles that are abandoned and operable, improperly parked vehicles, and many other nuisance items. So this is the foundation for this. As you see in the packet, I provided you a brief overview, also provided the red line version of the property maintenance code, where you can see all of the red text is the actual changes that we're looking at, many of, some of it being definitions, some of the other items being to define size of rooms, overcrowding, those type of things. Overcrowding was in the property maintenance code even before it was called the property maintenance code. It was minimum housing standards many, many years ago. So it's a coincidence, or whatever you want to say, it's through the process of evolving these codes and revising these codes every three years, it's been brought back. And it also mirrors international code bodies, international building code, international residential code, as far as size of rooms and those type of things. So all the code bodies are saying the same thing. The property maintenance code does take it up a notch, though, and more clearly defines overcrowding and issues like that. And I stand here before you for any questions that you may have, or...
Any questions from the Commissioners? Graffiti seems to be new in the property code.
It is.
Yeah.
That's one of our new definitions that was not in place before, so we need to clearly define what graffiti is, so we can easily identify when we're writing our citations and have some basis as to specifically what is graffiti and what that citation's gonna be written for.
And how long do we give a party to clean up the graffiti?
Graffiti is 10 days.
10 days? And if it isn't cleaned up within 10 days, does that particular party get a fine or something?
Our payment contractor will go in and repaint the area, and then we will send the owner of the property a greetings from the city of Salina with a bill in it and give you 30 days to pay that. If it's not paid within a 30-day period, then it will be assessed to the tax roll.
Any questions?
Yeah. Mr. Brown, as it kind of, I'm looking at the enforcement parts because there have been very few changes, which is a good thing because we have had a bit of the danger of structure issues over the past year, and I anticipate quite a bit more. I did notice that unsafe was a word that has been inserted in here. Is that...
And that mirrors exactly the text of the 2012. Where we're getting this base from is the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code. So it was expanded in the 2012 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code to include unsafe as well, to more clearly define and clearly indicate that dangerous structures are indeed unsafe, and the text needed to reflect that.
Okay. It just, it clearly, though, mirrors our enforcement procedure currently.
It does.
Okay, great.
And I would guess this question would be in regard to rental facilities probably more than homeowner facilities. You have a minimum temperature requirement, 68 degrees. Would this be the, on the renters' responsibility then to report if the temperature was...
For the tenant, the tenants themselves, if they felt that the house was unusually cold, or whatever, they could report. Because this is 68 degrees, measures three feet above the floor, and we actually, for the first time, put in where to measure that from. It wasn't clarified before. Where do you measure the three feet? Is it two feet from the wall? Is it six feet from the wall? We finally got to the point in this last revision of the 2012 edition that we're clearly defining where you measure that from. So if it's too cold or too hot, or whatever the case may be, the tenant can call in a complaint for that. Now, is it something wrong with the furnace? Is it something not wrong with the furnace or the AC? That's something, too, that we may have discussions with the landlord to see what can be done, what can be resolved, or is there indeed a problem? Some people are code-natured, some people aren't, so there's many variables that go into this.
Would a tenant be given a list of minimal requirements when moving into a rental facility?
That's gonna usually be up to the landlord. Now, our property maintenance code is always online, so it's an easy resource for anyone to look and see and research as to what the minimum standards are. But we're going to go out if we have a complaint or something to that effect, so that we have the property maintenance code is gonna be the basis that we go out on. That's gonna be our enforcement tool that we use for our citations based upon that complaint that came in.
I'm just saying that going to the maintenance code isn't necessarily the first thing that pops in your head if you're cold in your apartment.
No. The first thing that pops in your head is call the landlord.
Yeah.
We would hope they would. Call the landlord first and give them a chance, so then... Any other questions? I know we've talked about this at length in previous meetings, so...
We have. And on a side note, too, we've also presented this to the building advisory board, and they went through every part of this, and they were in agreement with the document, as you see before you now.
Mayor, I have a couple real quick questions, I think, if I may. Room areas, Jim, if we happen to be called in or have access in to do an inspection, an occupancy, not an occupancy, but a property maintenance inspection inside of a home, and we find that, let's say for the bedrooms, we're looking at a couple aspects to the room size. One is, is that it says, let's see, every bedroom shall contain a minimum of 70 square feet, but if it has more than one occupant, they need 50 per occupant. So if you have two people in a bedroom, it needs to be a minimal of 100, which most of us would envision to be like a 10 by 10 or something. But if they have 70 square feet, if you find 70 square feet in a bunk bed, and we know that there are two people sleeping in there, it's gonna be in violation of the code, how is that going to be enforced?
We're gonna send that notice out to the property owner as to what the violation is, seeing if the violation could be remediated without taking further steps. This is something that's gonna be due, it's gonna... One thing that's gonna be probably the biggest question is, say, the neighbor calls in a complaint, and the neighbor sees that there's 27 people, or 27 cars in the yard, or whatever the case may be, and they're already assuming that they're gonna have an overcrowded condition. When we investigate that, the notice is gonna go out to the property owner of record to remediate if that indeed is the condition. Now, if we go over there and we investigate, we're saying, well, that's grandson's birthday. We're having a big party. Well, that's something totally and over and beyond what the enforcement authority is.
Yeah. My question, let's say it's an older home, it's a two-bedroom home, one bedroom, the parents are in that bedroom, and let's say it meets the size requirement, but the other bedroom is smaller than 100 square feet, they have two kids, and there's no other bedroom to place the second child. I'm trying to figure out what our approach would be in dealing with that.
An existing condition, if there's no way, if there's no other rooms available, if there's no other rooms, given a possibility that they have, say, a family of four, and this house is 900 square feet, so we must have two people in one room that's gonna be less than 100 square feet. That's gonna be on a case-by-case basis, that's something we'll need to evaluate as well. It's not as though we're gonna ask someone to move or to build onto their home or something like that to meet this requirement based upon the family situation that they have currently.
So are there other factors that you, that are built into the written, because this is a very prescriptive code, are there other factors that, as a building official, you have the ability to weigh to say, I can consider these factors?
Correct.
And after considering those, we can allow a bunk bed and a...
The text, the heart of the International Property Maintenance Code has that provision.
Okay.
That it can be treated on an individual basis.
Okay.
Depending on the circumstances for those individuals.
The other question I had was on fences. We talk about them leaning and so forth. Is there a standard that can be applied to, say, a leaning fence as to when you would believe that it should be, or when it really should be brought back, repaired and brought back to a better condition?
That goes back to the building official discretion, too, as far as it's written into the property maintenance code, as to what degree of leaning or disrepair is this fence to where it is staff's opinion that it needs to be repaired. And that's left up to staff, at discretion of staff and building official and staff.
Okay. The one thing, too, it makes reference to is this, says when fences have been painted, all peeling, flaking, and chip paint shall be eliminated and the surface is repainted. How does that provision match up against the similar provision for buildings that need painted?
It's almost the exact same language.
Because I thought we'd modified that. I haven't looked at it in a while, but I thought we modified it.
I don't, we didn't put the percentage thing in, did we?
No, we did not have the percentage issues in there. We did not discuss, it was pretty vague at the last code cycle that we put into it. So we kept it fairly vague this time as far as if there's a certain percentage of square finishes or anything like that that needs to be repainted, we need to discuss that and figure out what that's gonna be in order to start enforcing it. But we've not said a specific amount of peeling, painting, or chipping paint at this point requires us to go back in.
So if we're looking at the provision for buildings today, what exactly does, do you remember what the code says for the buildings on how we deal with painting? What's a requirement?
No, I don't. Can't tell you right off the top of my head.
Okay. And the reason is, I know we had, there was quite a bit of discussion about that last time. I don't recall the final determination is where we thought we needed to be, more from a legal perspective, but this made me think about, is this consistent with whatever we're doing with that? And if it is, then we should be fine. If it isn't, then we may have to look at it again.
Yes, by knowledge, it mirrors the exact same language, this provision that you're referring to regarding buildings.
Okay.
Whereas it's not specifying a certain percentage or anything to that degree.
Okay, all right. Appreciate it.
And when it comes down to fences and those kind of things, be assured that when we go and investigate and we see that the fence needs repair, it needs to be replaced, there is no doubt would be in anyone's mind that this fence needs to be repaired and needs to be replaced.
Falling down.
We're not gonna take it to the degree where, gosh, you know, there's three boards here, there's four boards here. It will be quite obvious that the fence needs to be repaired.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Jason, did you want to take another look at this before we have a motion on it?
No, I think that's up to you.
You think it's okay?
Yeah, if you're comfortable, I think we're good.
Okay.
I just wanted some clarification to help with that, just because I know we dealt with that before, and...
Yeah.
My recollection of where we ended up was a little vague, and wanted to be sure we have consistency there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else here?
I think we can probably have staff verify that and bring it back on second reading then, make sure that it matches up.
Okay, public comment. Public comment? Sure, come ahead.
Randall Holm, 848 Custer Street. I'm glad you're addressing the graffiti issue. The only question I have has to do with the short notice to a landowner to get it done, or the city's gonna send staff out to do it. We have an unusual mail situation in Salina where it can take three to seven days for a letter to get from the courthouse to a residence in Salina, depending on timing. And that's if it then isn't, when it gets back to Salina, it doesn't have to be forwarded out of state. We have a lot of property owners that own property in Salina, Kansas, that either don't live here at all, or they're snowbirds. A lot of retired people travel a lot. A lot of non-retired people travel a lot. And a 10-day notice, or the city's gonna be, have the potential to send staff out to paint it, is a burden on both the city and an unreasonable request or expectation from a property owner to be able to address an issue, because they may not even be aware that there's an issue until they get that letter. And if it took seven to 10 days for him to get it, or two weeks, if they're out of state at the time, or whatever, or longer, I think we need to be a little more reasonable on that time allowance. And I also ask, because I've had problems with some of the property I've owned and/or managed in the city with graffiti in the past, is that we get, or have a discussion with our police department, if we think it's this serious an issue, to have them treat graffiti a little more seriously in their enforcement and that of it, and in trying to catch the people that are doing it, and then in our court system punishing the people that are doing it. I think a good idea would be to have those that are doing the graffiti, scrubbing it off and/or painting it, instead of paying staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Randall. Anybody else? Public comment? Bring it back to the commission, entertain an option.
Commissioners, real quick, I think one question that might help with the first question on the 10-day notice, this is for Jim. You guys can nod if you want to, but on the 10-day, that's the initial notice, and if someone, and I get the fact that they may not get it until day, say, four or five, possibly, just due to the mail, so that may leave five or six days to remedy the deal. But they would have the opportunity to call and meet with you and ask for an extension. And it's fairly typical that extensions are granted for when you know that they're ready to take care of the problem. Is that accurate?
Correct. We have two different options for the owner of the property. If they receive the notice at the day eight or nine even, or on day 10, if they will call us at the office, we will automatically give you a 10-day extension to get the process completed. If we know that they're gonna be out of town, they call us from out of town, it's gonna be two weeks before they can get it completed, or three weeks or something of that nature before somebody can get over and paint it, we will do what they call a compliance agreement and say, okay, it has to be painted within 28 days, or 30 days, or 14 days, whatever the case may be, and work with the owners of the property to do that. We do understand that there's issues with 10 days, since all of our certified mailings go to the Wichita office to be sorted and back to Salina. It is very time-consuming at times, and that we end up having eight, nine, 10 days before some of those letters are actually delivered. So we have taken that in consideration, and we'll work with the owners of the properties no matter what we can do.
And generally speaking, isn't it fairly accurate that at least in the warm months, when you have grass growing weeds and other things like that, you're dealing with a lot of outdoor nuisances, that when you look at the bulk of all of this, even just the citizen-generated, it's hard for us to keep up? And the easiest thing for you to do is to provide time for someone to take care of their own nuisance, rather than to really be strict and start citing folks at day 10?
Exactly.
So it works better for us to give them that opportunity and be flexible?
Right. And our staff has many times gone up the door to knock to see if there's somebody there or available that can answer the questions. And many times we send, well, all the times, we send a city, just a regular letter, not a certified letter, to the tenant of the property as well, so they're notified of the same issues.
Okay, thank you. Might help you with the context of the enforcement.
Just a quick question in regard to Mr. Holm's comment about perhaps any gang-related graffiti or something like that. How's that generally handled?
Gary can address that probably better than I can, but the basic impact is we want it removed as soon as possible, because it usually generates follow-up.
Right.
And that's part of it, but Gary, you can speak to that.
The police department's been very good with notifying us that there are some letters or symbols that need to be removed immediately. And sometimes we will send somebody out immediately to take care of at least a portion of it or something of that nature, working with the owners themselves. But our main goal is to knock on the door and say, understand that graffiti that's on your fence or your building has some implications of gang-related activity, and we want to take care of it as soon as possible. And at that point, we'll try to work with the neighbor or the owners of the property immediately to get that taken care of.
So is there a middle ground there where perhaps if something ought to be painted over immediately, we have somebody that can do that, and then the homeowner takes it from there and kind of puts it back into the original condition following that?
That would be correct, yes.
Do we still have to provide a graffiti kit and then resources for graffiti removal?
That's correct. We do offer that. Many times we'll work with them to go down to the hazardous waste materials of the unused paint, and they allow us to take, you know, a quarter a gallon, or whatever the case may be, of some paint that will cost us very little of anything to put on that specific symbol or something of that nature.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If all the discussion is over, I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve on first reading ordinance number 16-10829, adopting amendments to Chapter 31, property maintenance, Articles 1 through 10.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass on first reading, ordinance number 16-102829, amending Chapter 31, Articles 1 through 10 of the Salina Code pertaining to property maintenance code. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 4-0. Okay. Move on to ordinance number 16-10830. Mr. Bigston.
I think the clerk will announce the matter.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Item 7.2, first reading, ordinance number 16-10830, amending and renumbering Salina Code Section 2-21 and adopting new sections 2-21 through 2-33 and Sections 2-37 through 2-39 pertaining to the Commission Manager Form of Government and related future elections of the City of Salina, Kansas, and repealing ordinance number 2397, existing Salina Code Sections 2-21, 2-106 through 2-108, and 2-121.
Now, Mr. Bigston.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. The background on this item actually begins in 1917, when the Kansas Legislature adopted the City Manager Plan Act at that time. A number of states, including Kansas, in response to the progressive movement in relation to local government, enacted that enabling legislation. Salina, by a vote of the electorate, opted to come under the plan in 1921, and we have since had what is known as the Commission Manager Form of Government. That legislation, over the years, early years, was modified to a certain extent to apply to the different classifications of cities, and depending on whether a city was a council form of government or a commission form of government. That's relevant in a couple of ways to the matter that's before you today, in that in 2015, the Kansas Legislature, as I believe you're aware, determined that city, local elections should be moved from the spring in the odd-numbered years to the fall of the odd-numbered years. Part of those election-related statutes were included in that City Manager Plan Act. And in an effort to be sure that cities were not left with the opportunity to potentially charter out of any of those provisions, the legislature, basically in wholesale, repealed that City Manager Plan Act, and then did reenact certain portions, dealing primarily with the allocation of responsibility between the elected officials and the city manager, and also enacted what is, what enabled the cities to preserve whatever actions they may have taken, whether by charter ordinance or regular ordinance, related to their form of government. What brings us today is, to the matter today, is that shift in the timing of the election, as well as some particulars related to our structure locally that have previously been dealt with either under that act or principally by an ordinance that was adopted in 1921. So if I may, we can go through those points, I think, fairly quickly, and if anybody wants to, you know, has a question and wants to stop at that point in the discussion, please just stop me, or we'll see if there are questions at the end of the discussion. The ordinance before you begins with an extension of the current terms. That does not need to be codified. It's a one-time circumstance related to each of your terms, and in the proposed ordinance there in Section 1, we have laid out the effect of the change in the election time. And as you can see, it basically extends each of those terms for approximately nine months from terms that would have ended in April of those odd years. The elections will then instead be in the fall, and the transition actually occurs in early January of the following year, much like the current general elections at the state level. We then move to those matters that we thought it would be prudent to actually codify, and that results in a series of sections that you'll see there in the ordinance. The first affirms that we are under the continued Commission Manager Form of Government, as was established by a vote of the electors in 1921. The next section... The next section sets forth the powers and duties of the governing body. Those stated powers are consistent with those set forth in the Kansas Constitution, under the Home Rule provision, state statutes, what was addressed in the City Manager Act, and as well as what was in effect since the adoption of that original ordinance. We then move to the next section that addresses the, I'm sorry, I realize I spoke of the powers and duties, wanted then to speak to the provision that relates to the governing body, making clear and again carrying forward the concept that there is the annual selection of a chair of the governing body, and that that chair will also have the title of mayor. We then go on to the section that addresses your meetings. That, as you know, you have commonly addressed by resolution, and that section provides that you're able to continue to do so. It also affirms that your meetings are also subject to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. Section 7 addresses the qualifications for the office of commissioner, and they are essentially that one have United States citizenship and be a qualified elector of the city. Terms of office are addressed in the same way as they were under the City Manager Plan Act and the city's past practice. Section 9 addresses the oath as required of commissioners. In the study session discussion that we had, it was suggested that it might very well not be necessary for each of you to have bonds, in that governing body members don't really have access to anything that they might abscond with anyway, so that would seem to be a cost savings. The, Section 11 addresses the rate of compensation of commissioners. That was previously addressed in code and by the charter ordinance. That is unchanged, as it is presented there. Section 12 addresses the transition to the fall elections, and affirms, as has been the case, that those elections will be at large and nonpartisan. One rather small point, but one that we were required to do by the new statute, and that is to identify the number of signatures that are necessary if one files for office by a nomination petition. There are two ways to do that, either by application and paying the filing fee, which is $20, or filing a petition. And as you can see, the proposed level there is basically 50 signatures or 1% of those who voted in the prior election. The next section addresses the vacancy question. It speaks simply of a majority of the remaining members identifying the successor in the event of a vacancy. The new state statute does impose the requirement that that process occur within 60 days. So that is what prompts that point, just as a reminder more so than anything. If that doesn't occur within 60 days, the statute requires that an election be conducted. The draft remains silent as to enable the Board of Commissioners to determine how it might be they would identify their candidates for filling a vacancy. The section, the next section relates to the powers and terms of the city manager. That is drawn basically from the former City Managers Act, and it is also drawn from that prior ordinance, 2397. It confirms that that appointment is to be based strictly on administrative ability. The responsibility relates to managing all administrative affairs of the city. Also confirms that the city manager serves at the pleasure of the governing body. The following section speaks to the duties and functions of the city manager, again in more detail. It is a combination, again, of the former statute, the ordinance that has been in effect, and is consistent with the new legislation as far as the powers and authority of the city manager under the new act. The last new section there is taken verbatim from the City Manager Plan Act. It is one that basically assures that the city manager and the governing body, there's a limitation as far as any one commissioner addressing a matter that would normally be an administrative matter at the department level. So it assures the city manager that that would not be an issue. It also assures that you all, as a governing body, can know with confidence that if you ever feel a need to do so, then that would be strictly as a function of an action of a majority of the governing body. So that's, basically outlines what seemed to be appropriate to comply with the new statute, make the transition in the timing of the elections, and address, in many respects, in the local code, those matters that were previously addressed under the City Managers Plan Act. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Is there any public comment? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
This will be long. Madam, I move approval on first reading ordinance number 16-10830, amending and renumbering Salina Code Section 2-21 and adopting new sections 2-21 through 2-33 and Sections 2-37 through 2-39 pertaining to the Commission Manager Form of Government and related future elections of the City of Salina, Kansas, and repealing ordinance number 2397 and the existing Salina Code Sections 2-21, 2-106 through 2-108, and 2-121.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Same sign? Okay. Motion passes. Move on under Development Business 8.1.
Item 8.1, Resolution Number 16-7344, authorizing the mayor to execute a license agreement with USD 305, authorizing the placement and construction of a new loading and unloading space in the Pueblo Avenue right-of-way abutting Sunset Elementary School.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The topic here is Sunset Elementary School, which is located on West Republic and dates back to its original construction in 1953. As part of the current school district bond project, there's a new kindergarten classroom addition, a multipurpose room shelter addition, and some remodeling going on. As part of that project, the school district is proposing to construct a bus drop-off lane on the south side of Pueblo Avenue abutting the school along this north frontage here. And city staff identified this as being comparable to a private improvement in the public right-of-way, which needed to be authorized through approval of a license agreement by the city commission. The exclusive intended use of this drop-off lane is for district school buses. And so the school district, through their architect, filed this license agreement application requesting city commission approval to construct the bus loading/unloading lane outside the traveled way but within the Pueblo Avenue right-of-way. And so the plans call for construction of a 12-foot-wide, 160-foot-long inset there, and it will also require relocation of the public sidewalk onto school property at that location, and they're proposing to grant a public sidewalk or pedestrian easement for that portion. We had a similar project at Metal Arc School on Fairdale Road approved last year, and so this would be consistent with that request. This was reviewed by all our area utility providers, and there were no conflicts identified and no objections received. The school district will be responsible for initial construction and ongoing maintenance of the bus drop-off lane. And so your options would be to approve the attached resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a license agreement with USD 305. You could postpone consideration of the question today if you feel you need additional information, or you could decline to approve the proposed license agreement. Staff would be available for any questions the commission might have.
Any questions, of Dean?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Any public comment? Is anyone from the school district here? Any public comment? Okay. I entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 167344.
Yes, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Okay, I have an approval of Resolution Number 167344, authorizing the mayor to execute a license agreement with USD 305, authorizing the placement and construction of a new loading and unloading space in the Pueblo Avenue right-of-way abutting Sunset Elementary School. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Same sign? Four oh. We'll go on to Item 8.2.
Item 8.2, Application Number Z16-2, requesting an amendment of Section 42-598C of the Temporary Use Regulations in the Salina zoning ordinance to expand the areas within the community where farmers' markets may locate and operate to include churches located in any zoning district 8.2A, first reading ordinance number 16-10831.
Okay, Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is coming to you in the form of a text amendment that was filed by Phil Klema, and the City of Salina has had provisions for issuing temporary use permits for temporary outdoor uses. An example on a seasonal basis would be our consumer fireworks stands, but there are other temporary uses, most of which occur in non-permanent structures and out-of-doors. Back in 2003, the governing body and city staff received a number of complaints about some markets being too large for the site they were trying to occupy and having certain spillover effects on neighbors. So the Planning Commission recommended, and the city commission approved, an ordinance that made the Planning Commission a filter to review proposed locations and plans for open-air markets. And that ordinance went into effect starting in 2004. And since that time, we've had a number of flea markets, open-air markets, farmers' markets that have been reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission over the past 12 years. Some examples of open-air markets that are seasonal would be Stutzman's at Ninth and Cloud, and also Cow Valley Greenhouse at Ninth and Cloud that are set up temporarily and then are not there year-round. We also, on Page 2, listed a report of the farmers' markets that had been reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission since 2004. Some of those are the same market, just moved to different locations, but in each case, when a location was proposed, there was notice to neighboring owners, a hearing before the Planning Commission for interested citizens, and then the Planning Commission determined that the plans for that market were appropriate. What you will note there is that all the markets that have been approved to date are on commercial or industrial property, and they're all on arterial streets. This year, we were contacted by the group with the Wednesday Farmers Market. They were at the Masonic Simp. They would like to relocate to the Grand Avenue United Methodist Church parking lot at Grand and 8th Street. And staff determined that because that is zoned residential, it's not an eligible location to apply to have a farmer's market under the current regulations. So this amendment was filed requesting that you consider amending that section to allow farmers' markets to locate and operate in church parking lots in any zoning district. So this is just a policy question for you to decide whether the eligible locations for farmers' markets should be expanded to include church parking lots, and most of those are located in residential districts and neighborhoods. So what this would do is not approve any particular location, but it would expand the eligible locations so that a market operator, if they so chose, could apply to work with a church to set up in a church parking lot. That option is not available today. Many of our local churches have fairly large parking areas that go unused except for Sunday mornings, and so there wouldn't necessarily be a shortage of space. The flip side of that is that you could have an introduction of increased commercial activity or traffic in residential areas that aren't there before, but it's usually going to be one day a week. This text amendment request was considered by the Planning Commission on April 5. They voted eight to one to recommend that the regulations be amended to allow farmers' markets to be set up in church parking lots in addition to commercial locations. We've identified four alternatives for you this afternoon. One would be to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation and approve the proposed amendments as drafted. This would involve approving ordinance number 1610831 on first reading as presented. Under this scenario, you would, the market operator would still have to apply, there would still be a public hearing and notification to neighbors, and the Planning Commission would still serve as the filter to determine which locations are appropriate or inappropriate. You could approve this proposed text amendment with any additions you think should be made to the text. You could send this item back to the Planning Commission to work with staff on major changes to the amendment, or you could decide that we should maintain the status quo and recommend that the language not be included. In that case, you should vote to deny the proposed amendment. So with that, staff's available to answer any questions that this might generate.
Any questions, staff?
Are these temporary use permits made on an annual basis?
What, the way the ordinance is structured is that the initial approval for the location is done with a notice and public hearing, and then the next year, as long as the applicant submits a plan that is consistent with what the Planning Commission originally approved, then it is renewed administratively. So a lot of these, like the farmer's market that's at Water's True Value, they had an initial hearing when they moved there, and then since then, they get an over-the-counter administrative permit. Same with Stutzman's, same with Cow Valley Greenhouse, which have been in the same location for multiple years. So it is only the initial approval, the Planning Commission finding that the location is suitable and the plan is acceptable, and then as long as you don't have an increase in the, or a dramatic change in the market, then it's renewed on an annual basis. in the, or dramatic change in the market, then it's renewed on an annual basis.
This is specifically for farmer's markets, which heretofore have been once a week, so this would not be a permanent setup like Stutzman's. Obviously, the church is going to need to use the...
Yeah, that would be specified by the planning commission and any initial action they had, but that's why. It's not to say that if they applied for and they wanted to operate two nights a week that they couldn't do that, but in most cases, there's overlap with some of the market providers, so they might sell at one location on Wednesday or Tuesday and at another location on Friday. So...
But they need to come back to get approval for the second day?
Right. So, if a farmer's market was approved for a Wednesday night farmer's market, and for some reason they wanted to operate three or four evenings a week, they would have to modify their application and go back before the planning commission.
And once the farmer's market was operable for a while, what recourse do the neighbors have if there does appear to be negative influence on them?
Well, every, there's a provision in the ordinance, and every permit that is issued said if the operators do not conform with the ordinance and with the commission's conditions of approval, then their permit is revocable.
Can the neighbors petition the planning commission if there's a negative influence?
The idea was, rather than approving the markets and the locations administratively and then having the neighbors react, this process tells the neighbors what's being proposed and gives them an opportunity before it's ever set up or located to raise questions or concerns about it. But if a market is operating and they were approved for 12 vendors and they have 36 vendors on a given day, then they would be in violation of their permit, and it could be potentially revoked if the neighbors found that to be an unacceptable intrusion.
And I'm back and jog your memory on this one. It looks like Commissioner Boxer opposed it. Do you happen to remember for what reason?
One of the things that we pointed out, and this is something that the market operators will have to be aware of, we had a situation a few years back where all the preschools and group daycares moved out of the church locations because if you are operating any form of for-profit business and you are making lease payments to a church, then you have put the church in business with you, and in those cases, the church were going to lose a portion of their tax exemption because they were conducting business on their property. So, as long as a farmer's market is set up as a co-op or a not-for-profit venture, then that's not going to have implications for the church. But there was some concern on Commissioner Boxer's part that it could create issues for churches if they allow people to lease space on their property. So, if I had a dance school and I conducted my dance school inside a church and I was paying the church rent for that, the county appraiser views that as a for-profit activity.
Commissioners, I would say on that item, that has really nothing to do with our land use decision. That's simply a buyer beware or an owner beware issue that the churches have to contemplate that before they would allow that to happen, but it doesn't enter into our contemplation of land use at all. It's really up to them.
Okay. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew.
I do, we have Phil Kleeman here and other representatives who may want to speak.
The applicant's here.
First of all, I would like to thank John Berger and Dean Andrew for their assistance in this process. They've been most helpful. And secondly, I would like to thank whoever put the agenda together to get me ahead of KW instead of behind them, as I was in the city planning commission. When we considered different locations for our market, it was not because we wanted to, but because we were, the Masonics associates informed us that we would not be able to use their facility this year. They had concerns about whether or not they might not be there. So, we are looking at North Salina particularly because we think that there's a health inequity in that part of our community, in many cases due to the access to food. So, we wanted to bring different food sources to that part of our community, and we worked with Grand Avenue Methodist Church specifically because they already had one food program going, started out of their congregation, and that was Prairie Land Food, which is a distribution of commodity foods that people order ahead and they pick up there at the church. So, that's specifically why we selected that location. That, and it's right across the street from 93 Income Qualified Apartments. Do you have any questions for me about what we're doing and why we're doing it?
I think it's a wonderful idea for neighborhoods to have the option of just walking across the street or down the block to get those materials that we want children to eat healthy and eat those things, those fruits and vegetables. So, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Our group is also administering the EBT SNAP programs in all three farmer's markets this year, so that will also be a new service in our community.
Okay.
Can you give the days and times?
I'm sorry?
Days and times of those farmer's markets?
I can't hear you, John. I'm so sorry.
Day and time of the farmer's market?
This market will be on Tuesday from 4:00 to 7:00. The Friday market at north of Dairy Queen on Ninth Street is from 4:00 to 7:00 on Friday, and the Saturday market is from 7:00 to 11:00 at Water's True Value on Ohio. So, we've got them distributed across the community, and all three markets are under different management. I should say that. We're not managing the markets, we're only managing the EBT SNAP.
Right. And as far as the concern about complaints maybe that might arise, have they gone pretty much without incident, the rest of these?
We had, the biggest complaint we had when we were at the Masonic was sometimes it got hot, and that was from the vendor's perspective. The sales were also hot, so we appreciate the community responding to this. One of the reasons why we are expanding the farmer's market in our community is because of the food assessment that was done in 2014, 15 in our community, and we found that in Saleen County, for every 10,000 population, we had .18 farmers markets. And across the state, that number is .72, and regionally, it's .65. It's reported by the University of Wisconsin Food System Profile. So, we were considerably underserved as far as the number of farmer's markets in our community. So, it wasn't without great consideration that we expanded that effort in our community.
All right.
Thank you very much.
I could say, just from involvement with North Salina Group and so on, I appreciate having that up there, and also the one on North Ninth. I think it's great that those two are there in service, but also the really good work that you and the other folks are doing around food insecurity and those types of...
I think all three markets serve a good purpose in our community, and they're well located across the community at this point, so thank you very much.
I think the only way that you could make this opportunity better is to fill the rest of the nights with farmer's markets.
Well, we'll try that.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you very much.
Is there any public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Ordinance Number 16-10831 on first reading, approving the proposed amendments in additions to Section 42-59, Section 8C.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Application Z16-2 on first reading ordinance number 1610831. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Four-oh. Okay, 8.3, please.
8.3, matters relating to the requested closure of South Fourth Street, 8.3A, first reading ordinance number 16-10833, requesting approval of an amendment of the conditions of approval applicable to the PDDU and approval of an amended development plan to allow an expansion of the Graves Family Sports Complex facilities that includes the closure and elimination of the east side of South Fourth Street.
Okay, Mr. Andrew again. You're busy this week.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We have this question broken down into three different action items, which will hopefully be apparent as to why, but it was broken up the same way before the city planning commission, and there are reasons for us treating the east side different from the west side in terms of the mechanism by which Fourth Street would be closed and vacated. But back in August of 2013, there was an application that was filed by Kansas Wesleyan, actually two applications. And the first one was a replat of their land holdings on the block bordered by South Fourth Street on the west, Claflin Avenue on the north, Osborne on the east, and Cloud Street on the south to create a Kansas Wesleyan University Sports Complex addition. And the purpose of the replat was to create an expanded campus for the school's football, soccer, and track facilities with a practice field located in the southeast corner. And as you're aware, they had an existing Glenn Martin Stadium at that location that was demolished and replaced with a new grandstand and a fenced-in plaza. And so, in the fall of 2013, those plans were reviewed, and as far as the planned development district, the planning commission recommended approval of the creation of a planned development district for that block, and they also recommended approval of the companion development plan for that campus at the same time. And one of the primary reasons for that is that the university zoning district has a standard 50-foot front setback, and this block had four front yards with 50-foot setbacks in each of those cases, and there were a number of improvements that were proposed within that 50-foot setback line. And so, the planned development district was used as the mechanism to grant exceptions or modifications to that. And one of those dealt with minimum setbacks from Fourth Street and allowed the grandstand to be located within 15 feet of the Fourth Street boundary. And this is being brought back in terms of an amendment to the planned development district because if Fourth Street is closed and eliminated, there would no longer be a minimum setback from Fourth Street. There were also some items that moved from their original location in relation to Claflin Avenue and Cloud Street. The other thing was that the planning commission recommended, and you included in your action, a requirement that there be a seven-foot wide buffer and a new east curb line constructed on the northbound or east leg of Fourth Street. Again, if Fourth Street is closed and eliminated, that condition would no longer be applicable. And there was also a requirement that Kansas Wesleyan construct separate left turn and right turn lanes on the northbound leg of South Fourth Street at Claflin. Again, that may no longer be applicable if Fourth Street is closed and eliminated. So, in November of 2013, the city commission concurred with the planning commission's action and approved a proposed replat. And one of the conditions of that replat was that the right-of-way profile for Osborne would be 46 feet in width. Osborne would be designated as a one-way street from Claflin to Cloud with a 20 and a half foot travel lane and an eight and a half foot parking lane on the east side. And part of the reason for that was that in order to accommodate a track, this block was widened by 38 feet from east to west and 10 feet from north to south through vacations of part of the Fourth Street, Claflin, and Osborne right-of-way. So, the city commission approved all these items in November 2013, and you approved the site development plan. This particular plan was developed by Wilson and Company, and this is the plan that was presented, and it had a number of conditions and approved modifications to the 50-foot front setback requirement, again recognizing that this is Fourth Street and this stadium grandstand is 15 feet from the Fourth Street line there. You also approved building elevations for the stadium, a fencing plan, and a drainage Based on a change that has occurred since 2013, and that is that Kansas Wesleyan has reached a conceptual agreement with Union Pacific on a new lease, and that lease would allow Kansas Wesleyan to be the new lessee of the railroad right-of-way between Claflin and Cloud. That lease allows Kansas Wesleyan to lease the east 33 feet over here and the west 33 feet on the other side for use for beautification and installation of Kansas Wesleyan-owned and maintained fences and for purposes related to Kansas Wesleyan's athletic facilities. So, when this project was done, knowing that Union Pacific was considering that, a temporary fence was put up on the west side. And now, the application that is before you today, which I believe we have those plans, John, is an approval to the original development plan for the sports complex to allow expansion of the stadium grandstand pedestrian plaza and movement of the fence line 29 feet to the west into space that's currently occupied by the northbound or east side of South Fourth Street. So, John, if you could go back to the highlighted one a second. So, this yellow highlighted area represents what is today the east side or northbound leg of Fourth Street, which is temporarily closed for construction. There's a temporary fence line right here, and the proposal that's before you today would expand that hard-surface pedestrian plaza and extend it 29 feet to the west of its current location. The other aspect of this is going through and eliminating the original conditions of approval that would no longer apply if this plan is approved. And then, of course, the third aspect is if you approve this amended development plan, it would result in the permanent closure and removal of the pavement for the east or northbound side of Fourth Street between Claflin and Cloud. That's what's needed to allow the expanded stadium plaza to occupy that area. So, obviously, staff did not consider this a minor amendment because it involved the request to close and remove a street. But just to summarize, the improvements that are proposed by Kansas Wesleyan that are part of this is that you would have this expanded hardscape plaza over here on the east with gates, ticket booths, and covered pavilion and a commemorative memorial to Glenn Martin, all on that west side. There would be ornamental wrought iron fence featuring brick pilasters along the west side, just as there are on the other three sides, but the fence line would shift 29 feet to the west. There would be masonry walls constructed in the corners, southwest, northwest, and potentially southeast right here, and then, well, a potential future construction of a wall in that southeast corner. So, John, somewhere on there, we have the depiction of the potential sign in that corner. Today, there is a open fence and just a small plaque in that area, but if this plan is approved as presented today, it would give Kansas Wesleyan the option of going back into that southeast corner and having a more substantial sign in that location that would be masonry instead of the wrought iron. So, why is this back before you today? So why is this back before you today? Is that we have amended plan. Today, there's only fifteen feet from the back of the grandstand to their west property line. Under this amended plan, which calls for eliminating Fourth Street, that plaza would be widened, so it would be forty-four feet, the line would be forty-four feet behind the grandstand, creating a larger pedestrian area in that area. The other thing we wanted to make note of was that the east side of Fourth Street, the there is no right-of-way there. The entire east side of Fourth Street lies entirely within Union Pacific Railroad right-of-way, and it's being leased by the city from the railroad. On the other side, on the west side of the tracks, the city does have right-of-way, and that's why that is being treated separately from the east side. So we're we're looking at the amended plan, we're looking at eliminating conditions from the original planned development district that would no longer be applicable if the east if the east side of Fourth Street is closed and eliminated. And then the third aspect is that in nineteen ninety-four, the city commission adopted a policy resolution that asked that any time a street was proposed for closure and vacation, that the planning commission would conduct a public hearing to receive comments and input on that. And so that did occur on April the fifth, and the planning commission fulfilled their duty by conducting a public hearing both on the changes to the stadium and and the elimination of the east side of Fourth Street. Did want to make one one comment. Obviously, the Kansas Wesleyan's campus is in a public semi-public land use area on the comprehensive plan, and in reviewing this, we would make note that Kansas Wesleyan is an integral part of the community and a community partner. And in terms of the comprehensive plan, looking at the location and development criteria in the plan, it appears to staff that Kansas Wesleyan, their design team, have made every effort to enhance the appearance of this block and have it blend in as much as possible with the surrounding neighborhood, especially as it relates to the the stadium side. And the changes proposed by Kansas Wesleyan would enhance the appearance of their campus and that particular corridor. So as to the east side of Fourth Street, the planning commission looked at application PDD thirteen-two B, including the expansion of the sports complex onto existing South Fourth Street, and they voted eight to zero to recommend approval of that, subject to several conditions, and they made a grand total of, I believe, eleven findings related to that, which are incorporated into the planned development district ordinance that you have in front of you, which is ordinance number, I believe, one oh seven or one oh eight three three. So but the planning commission made eight or eleven different findings in support of the plan submitted by Kansas Wesleyan, and specifically, they found that the east side of closure of the east side of South Fourth Street will not deprive any other property owner of street access or affect the developability of any neighboring property because Kansas Wesleyan owns all the property on both sides of the closure area. And they also found that the public would suffer no loss or inconvenience as a result of the permanent closure of South Fourth Street because alternative northbound and southbound routes are available. The changes to the perimeter's street pattern will not adversely affect traffic flow or patterns or negatively impact emergency response or public safety. They also found that the expansion of the pedestrian plaza as proposed would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood, and they found that Kansas Wesleyan's plans for enhancing their sports facility would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. We have identified four alternatives, and again, this relates to the stadium plan amendments and the east side of Fourth Street. If you concur with the recommendation of the planning commission, you could approve the amended development plan for the Graves Family Sports Complex PDD, which includes the permanent closure of the east side of South Fourth Street and a number of setback exceptions that were requested by Kansas Wesleyan, subject to any conditions that you think are appropriate. To carry out this alternative, you would approve ordinance number sixteen oh eight three three on first reading. You could approve the amended site development plan, subject to certain revisions being made to the plan. If you take that approach, staff may have to modify the attached ordinance. You could postpone consideration of this PDD application if a majority of you feel there are unresolved site or traffic circulation issues, or if you feel you need additional information to make a decision. Or fourthly, you could deny this application and provide your reasons for that decision. We did want to point out that in the ordinance that's attached, the findings in that ordinance are the planning commission's findings in support of closure and vacation. If you are not supportive of the closure or approval of the amended development plan, obviously, the staff and the city attorney would be able to assist you in in developing different findings than what the planning commission made. But with that, I would focus on the the stadium plan and the east side of Fourth Street and try to address any questions you had about that.
Questions of staff.
Just a few, Mr. Andrew. What would happen with traffic on game days? Osborne just looks kind of small to handle, but a lot of traffic would eventually try to get to Cloud.
The there is a
and Highland or Osborne can
There is a campus parking plan, and as part of that campus parking plan, there is a shared parking agreement with Saint Mary's Church to the south, and actually, probably the majority of the conveniently located spaces for people that might be driving to attend a game would be to park in the Saint Mary's parking lot and then walk across Cloud to the stadium. So the most likely route would be to use Cloud Street to get to that parking lot.
Okay, and with the fire access lane on the northern half of the west side of the tracks, that's for fire vehicles? Is that a, I noticed from the artist rendition, that driveway did not
Well, what Well, you had This is where the west lane of Fourth Street, existing Fourth Street, is right here.
Yeah.
Under this plan, there would be a driveway adjacent to the Student Activities Center. That driveway would terminate here, but this would be a a hardscape that would exceed twenty feet in width that would be available for fire department apparatus to continue on down here and then get around this corner of this building, and by getting into there, they would have access to the internal parts of the campus. So this part right here would be considered a a fire access lane.
Yeah, how do they get out without backing up?
Well, there's a a large grass commons area here. I I would imagine they would they would circle around in there and come back out. But we do have representatives of the fire department here if you would like to hear them respond to that.
Would that be more part of the part of the west side versus?
It it would be more of a focus on on the plan for the west side. Again, the the reason for the distinction is that on the east side, the city no longer has any public right-of-way interest, and so we're mostly focused on on the how this relates to the plan for the stadium expansion.
Okay. And the parking on Osborne would be on the east side reserved for residents that Osborne, just some clear on the plan now would be to return Osborne to two-way or keep it one-way?
Well, that will be item C on your agenda, but
Because I think
We have we have determined as a staff that it is feasible to do that, but that would be a separate action item for you to take once we get through these first two items.
Is there presently parking on Osborne?
There's presently parking on Osborne. John, if you do you want to do the, do you have the right-of-way profile for that? You may have to blow this up for you, but the this was the plan that was presented in two thousand thirteen, and the right-of-way width is forty-six feet and the paving width is twenty-nine feet back to back. And today, Osborne Street is one-way south, and parking is allowed on the east side.
The pavement, the pavement isn't very wide there on Osborne.
I'm sorry, my brain is flipped right, which way is north or south?
You are looking north from Cloud Street, and so
Okay, got it.
You are, the reason you're looking at a car coming at you on the wrong side is that it's one-way south, and so when you park on the east side, you are parking heading south. But that is not, it is, nobody's parking space in front of their house is reserved. It's a it's a public street, so so if if parking is legal, it's not necessarily reserved for a particular house or residence. It is public parking.
Does Slade has permit parking?
Not on its streets, no.
All right, and do all those houses have driveways?
Well, we will get into that in great detail when we get to item C.
See.
So this, with that drawing, that would, Osborne there would still be one-way or two-way?
This, what this is depicting is that this, in two thousand thirteen, when this plan first came before the city commission, and what you have to realize here is that in order to make the stadium and the track and all that fit, a portion of the right-of-way for Osborne was vacated, and Oz, the pavement for Osborne was narrowed. And as a result of that, the the plan that was put forward at that time was to make Osborne one-way south with parking on the east side so that there would be parking available for the residences that are on the east side of Osborne.
Right, because in in theory, I have no problem, well, not much of a problem, closing the eastbound side of Fourth, but that traffic has to go somewhere.
Commissioners, could I suggest something for you? I just checked with Greg to make sure we're okay, given the land use item here. And the question is, is if you believe that the traffic circulation or any aspect of the traffic set up on Osborne is a key factor for you in making a decision on the item that you're on right now, and if the answer is yes, then the question I'd ask Greg is if he felt it was he was comfortable with Dean going ahead and getting to that report and covering some of those aspects, because as you as you bring those together on the assumption that it is a factor, you're going to have questions about that anyway. So if if you say, yeah, that isn't a a real factor there, we could have Dean go ahead and do that piece of the report if that's a factor for your decision. If it's not a factor, if you said, hey, we'll look at the Fourth Street items completely independent of Osborne, Osborne's nice but doesn't relate, and we can talk about Osborne later, then we can just wait on that. It's up to you.
Well, my question on that would be if we're if we're if we're looking at all these items individually, if we're looking at strictly the amending the PDD on this, is there anything on amending the PDD that, and like I said, looking at it individually, is there anything that says the temporary condition where it's two-way on the west side, would that become permanent? And therefore, Osborne wouldn't necessarily need to be north-south if that's what, you know what I'm saying?
Sure. Yeah, you have a lot, a few combinations potentially of what you might consider, and depending on where you go, may depend on the impact of
Because the way I was reading it, the only reason to really make Osborne north-south again would be if item eight B prevailed
Yeah.
And and that was not available to be
Yeah.
North-south, so.
And and when you have those options, again, if it comes back that you feel like where you go might be affected by what you believe are reasonable options for Osborne, we could we could jump into the information about Osborne as you contemplate. If you feel like, under any of those circumstances, Osborne's not a factor, and whatever we do with Osborne doesn't affect any of those decisions, we can wait. But I just wanted to be sure that, because what what we're trying to do is, is we know that we have three decisions or three pieces of decisions that all sort of culminate in one big decision, and when you think about what that big decision is, those factors, I would imagine, come into play. And I didn't want to artificially hold Dean back on giving you some of the information on Osborne if you felt you needed to have it to contemplate.
Commissioner Davis, would you feel like you'd like to know a little bit more about Osborne?
I like having the information. I mean, I realize there's separate issues as written.
And as Commissioner Blanchard pointed out, everyone's mind processes this information differently, but the the point we were trying to make with the planning commission in here is that any decision that's made about the east side, east leg of Fourth Street, doesn't prejudge or predetermine what happens with the west side. And so we are, we are happy to cover all the ground that would help put all the factors in play here, so if it would be helpful, we can go ahead. We have a a presentation on the other side, the east side relating to to Fourth Street. And so, John, I guess if you want to go to that that presentation C there, we can do that. This, what occurred is that the planning commission, after making all their recommendations related to Fourth Street, made a separate recommendation that said, having recommended that the east side and the west side of Fourth Street be closed and vacated, they made a recommendation that consideration be given to converting Osborne back to two-way traffic. So this, this is a depiction of the the profile, and, John, if you just want to go through there, the the fire department went out, and part of the thing that we were looking at is if Fourth Street were completely closed and vacated, then Osborne Street becomes the primary means to get from Station Two to Cloud Street. And so there were a number of tests that were run and apparatus that was brought out to determine whether if you converted Osborne to two-way traffic and you had parking, could it still adequately serve as a primary response route for emergency vehicles? And the conclusion that was reached is that it would. And the other thing to remember about these photographs is if you are obeying the rules of the road, if there's a emergency vehicle traveling south, this vehicle right here should not be there. It should be
Pulled over.
Pulled over behind or in front of that vehicle, giving more room for the emergency vehicle. So the conclusion was that the with the twenty-nine-foot profile that we have there and parking on one side, that it was feasible to convert Osborne Street back to two-way traffic and to have parking available to the residents on the east side only, no parking on the west side. And the other thing we did, John, you've got some photographs of the various residences. We did a, we did this in two thousand thirteen, and we updated it, but we we went to each of the residents and documented the off-street parking that they had available, starting at Claflin and working our way south. And so this is a new approach and driveway that was put in for that residence. This is sixteen oh nine and has a fairly lengthy driveway with a garage. This is at the corner of Russell and Osborne. This is the only property we identified as having only one off-street parking space, but the thing is that that this property has frontage on Russell, and so Russell's available for on-street parking as well. This is a a duplex opposite the sports complex. And then, as we go south, there is parking back behind this duplex here and a parking lot there. This is a private driveway that goes behind Doug Hill's apartments. And then we have a house on the corner of Cloud and Osborne that has parking available. It's just that the resident there has decided that parking a boat is more important than parking a vehicle there, but the the parking is available. So So there are no properties on the east side of Osborne that have no parking. There's one that has only one space and it has the ability to park on Russell. So as, as we get to that item and, and what we look at in the way of Osborne Street, your options would be to leave it one-way as it is now or convert it to two-way with parking or to convert it with two-way with no parking, whatever you feel comfortable with. But again, the way that we've tried to structure this is that framing the issue on the east side, you making a decision which doesn't predetermine your decision as relates to the west side of Fourth Street. And then depending on the outcome of that, you may want to address making changes to Osborne.
On Osborne, at Cloud, there isn't a light. It's just a stop sign.
That is correct.
And you could sit there a long time before you get through.
There was a traffic study done at that corner and it was determined that a signal for Osborne was not warranted.
That it might be.
It's now pedestrian only. But I'd let Mr. Stack address that if he'd like. But the, the traffic study that was done recommended it being removed because it didn't need a warrant for a signal.
Was that based on the one-way?
It was, it was based on how it was used before.
Oh, okay, good.
But it also took into account that it was going to be a one-way street.
Yeah. And Commissioners, again, when we looked at that, you had a different use of Fourth Street at the time as well. But I think in that particular case, as, as with anything, if there's a change in the condition, then you may want to reserve the right to monitor that for a s, set period of time to determine if in fact it would, within that reasonable period of time, meet warrants for a signal. We could, in other words, we could look at it if there's a change and, and follow it and see if that, if it changes anything and it would meet warrants.
Yeah, the, the problem is the warrants weren't even close. So it's just not, I mean, even with a thousand cars there, it wouldn't even come close to meeting warrants for a signal. So I guess that was what the, the, the traffic signal warrant study mentioned, basically. And then another, uh, Wilson and Company performed a study in 2006 as well. And it still operated at a level of service B with all the other ra, with, with Fourth Street closed and Claflin closed as a, as an example, or what, what they were posing back then. So it's, a level of service B is a, is fine for, for intersection. I don't know if you have any other questions on that or not?
No, I, I guess my big concern was how congested that street becomes on game days. Like, I could see there being that whole block filled with cars trying to make a left or right or either, or particularly a left turn on, onto, uh, Cloud Street. Uh, which then means your emergency vehicle has to go another block further east to get down to Cloud. If, if this, because you, assuming there's going to be parking.
Be some parking there.
You're right. I mean, there's going to be just limited space for people to get out the way of a big fire truck.
Yeah, having Russell in the middle of the intersection as well as driveways kind of scattered through there, there's always going to be a place to pull over. So that's, that's the main thing that you'd be concerned with. You'd have at least four driveways where you could get over and get back out. Because nobody's going to, hopefully, nobody's going to park right in front of somebody's driveway, as well as Russell gives you a couple spots. And then, I mean, just with game days, people park at St. Mary's, they park on the north side, the west side. This, I mean, just kind of they scatter. That's what's great about the, the university is it's kind of a, you know, it's, not, not everybody has to drive to the game. A lot of people walk and park different places and go to the games that way.
I, I like that, Dave, I mean, having a campus, you know, with, as long as you can funnel your traffic around the campus.
Right. That is the whole point of this closure and has some, some value.
Any more questions of Mr. Stack?
No.
Okay, I know there's several people here that probably that want to talk about this. Uh, yes, Mr. Thompson, just give your name and your address, please.
Good afternoon, Matt Thompson, President of Kansas Wesleyan, one hundred East Claflin. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak after the fruit stand conversation this afternoon. I have a brief presentation I put together for you, so if we could pull that up, I'd appreciate it. Our next slide, our mission at Kansas Wesleyan is to prepare students to promote academic excellence, spiritual development, personal well-being and social responsibility. That's the mission of what drives the institution and what we do every day at the university. Ninety-five percent of our students come to Kansas Wesleyan to be involved in something. It's what we refer to as the power of "and." They come to be a part of the sports programs or to be a part of our music programs and to get a great education at Kansas Wesleyan. So we talk a lot about that on the next slide, about the power of "and." And that really is a significant part of who we are at Kansas Wesleyan. Want to give you just a couple of quick facts. This fall, we'll celebrate a hundred and thirty years as an institution. And all hundred and thirty of those years are here in Salinas, have been a longtime partner with the community and are proud of that. Uh, over the last decade, we've invested more than twenty million dollars into our campus, which has produced jobs and other investments, we think has enhanced the community. And on an annual basis, our impact back into communities, about forty million dollars on an annual basis. So we feel like we have a significant part of the liveliness of what happens in the Salina community. Couple of the quick facts, we do host twenty-three NAIA Sports at Kansas Wesleyan. We are nationally also known for our debate and forensics program, well-regarded music programs with international students coming in and international performers coming in throughout the year. We've just launched a new competitive esports program, which is online gaming as a new sport. Outside of the twenty-three we offer through NAIA. Uh, and we also have our Center for Global Service Learning, which provides opportunities for students to serve both locally and internationally as a part of the experience they have at Kansas Wesleyan. Again, leveraging the "and" of a strong classroom experience with practical, real-world experiences. A little bit about our students, thirty percent of our students are first-generation students. Our, we're very close balance between male and female students. Sixty-eight percent white, sixteen percent Hispanic, which makes us the second-largest Hispanic-Latino-serving institution in the state by percentage. And ten percent are black-African-American. Uh, this year, we've tipped to being a little bit more, if we can go back one slide, to being a little more out-of-state, fifty-three percent and forty-five percent in-state. Uh, and then two percent international. As you get to see in those slides when we hop back to them, if you'll go back to now the, the images, go one more over, number seven. This will give you a full sense of what this project will look like. Uh, so you see here where Fourth Street has been removed with the tracks going through the middle. The plaza, as Mr. Andrew explained, expanding out over what is the current northbound portion of Fourth Street. On the west side, which we haven't talked about, but I only have one presentation, so you get it all at one time from me, is that we removed Fourth Street on the west side, on the southbound lane, and putting in a new expanded parking lot that allows for bus drop-off, which removes some of the traffic we're currently putting on Osborne right now for bus traffic comes back over to here with good circulation. And the south part of that street gets removed and becomes green space. So more green space, another quad area for us on campus. On the next slide, you can see this from a slightly different perspective, looking from the south back towards the north and seeing how that looks a little bit from the street side. And then the final image is supposed to be a flyby, but I don't think it works with this part of the presentation. On the next slide, I talk to you just a little bit about some of the reasons for closing Fourth Street. It really does complete the project of what we've done here. This was not an option in 2013. Uh, we now have the railroad in agreement to join us with this lease agreement. Uh, they were unwilling to talk to us till about nine months ago. Uh, and so we've been working through the city and with Union Pacific to move this piece forward and to really create a much safer, enjoy, more enjoyable campus, not only to our students and our athletes, but also to the public who comes onto campus for our events. Uh, we have more than three hundred student athletes who are using the sports complex on a regular basis. So it's not just soccer and football and track and field, but it's our softball and our baseball and other sports that are going out and using that for conditioning and using it and crossing Fourth Street at this point. St. Mary's Grade School and High School are also using the complex for their marathon, but also their football plays there on Friday evenings. Uh, so just the general safety as well as the overall beautification of this project, to really finish off what we started here, again, with a possibility that didn't exist before. Last slide. Uh, some of the benefits, we've already invested eight million dollars in this project. We'll invest another million to finish this project, again, creating more jobs and investment in our community. Most of our local, um, where we can use local subcontractors and contractors, we are doing that and have done that throughout the project. Uh, we will try, divert traffic to both Ninth Street as well as to Ohio, but with a proposal that's come forward now, after a great conversation at the last session with the planning commission of using Osborne as two-way. I think we've got a great option here that allows us to close Fourth Street to meet the needs that we have, but also support the neighborhood to allow them to have two-way traffic in a way that gets them around campus and back up moving for, north on Fourth Street. Uh, we do believe this supports, as Mr. Andrew said, the comprehensive plan and strategic plan of the city. And so those are the overviews of what we're doing. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Just one, there's a fence on both sides of the.
There is a fence on both sides.
Students have to either go north or south to get to.
Everybody will have to, yes. Using the crosswalks at the, um, Cloud and at Claflin. Uh, that's a requirement of the Union Pacific contract. So it'll be a brick and wrought iron fence on the east side along the sports complex. And it'll be a, uh, black cyclone fence on the west side.
No plans to put any structures in the green space on the south end of that?
Is the railroad providing you with, uh, the ability to access the other side of the fence? Because it'd be a shame if you maintain each side of the property nice and, and the spot in between the fences becomes weeds and overgrown. Are, are you going to be allowed the opportunity to, perhaps through an agreement with them, to maintain, to keep the weeds down and so on on that as well?
Sure. I actually think that's their responsibility to maintain that, but we'll work in cooperation with them to make sure.
Well, I know sometimes they, sometimes they're a little particular about letting you, about even allowing you to do it.
Sure.
So hopefully that will, hopefully.
I'm going to defer real fast. Gerald's had a part of the conversation we've had.
Oh, good, okay, great.
Do you consider the railroad to be a good partner down the road in terms of extending the lease?
I do. I think they don't want the traffic on either side of the railroad. They'd prefer not to have Fourth Street anywhere along their railroad track. And so this is an advantage to them, so they like the direction that we're allowing them to move and make the change here. So I think they will continue to be a good neighbor and partner for us.
Except they just didn't want to talk about it before.
I can't speak to why it's taken us a decade to get to this point, but it has and we are here, but we're here now because the opportunity's finally arisen.
Right.
And again, it's not an opportunity I think we'll necessarily be here if we wait.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any other public comment?
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, and I guess we should say to the community who's watching on Access TV.
And your name and address.
Congratulations, Kay.
Thank you, Evelyn, appreciate that.
You were a big help to us when I was on the commission. And I, I really have appreciated the commission's forward-looking. What would you say, you're.
Progressive?
You're not looking at things from just a short-term thing, but you're looking at what's best for the community in the long term.
Okay.
And I almost got up for com, public comment because I wanted to mention that we really do need to start making that plan in terms of two-hundred years. Our Asian countries plan for two-hundred years. When I, uh, came up for election for the city commission, I had said we need to plan for two-hundred years. And I'm glad to see that we're getting the, um, farmers' markets and so on and the local produce that I was promoting at that time. That takes, takes a while for wheels to turn and, and to get started.
Just for city clerk, just give your name and address.
I'm sorry.
Just for the city clerk, give your name and address.
Well, I'm sorry. Evelyn Maxwell, four-one-four, East Wayne Avenue.
Okay, thank you, Evelyn.
And I live in an area that has about a hundred and fifty homes that are affected by the Fourth Street. And I realize that the fire truck can get down Osborne, but it's going to be slower because of the streets where it has to turn corners to get to that area of, of, uh, residences, well, and also St. Mary's and the residential area. There have been buses parked on Osborne in the past. And so if you want to proceed with the program, I think we need to say something about bus parking on Osborne because that's going to make it a lot harder for the fire trucks to get through. Saturday, when I drove by the campus, there were five seventy-one passenger buses parked on streets around the campus. So that bus turnaround, I don't know how many buses it will accommodate. I haven't heard that, but, um, I am concerned about that. I'm also concerned about not being able to have the fire lane all the way through on Fourth Street. And then what if you have a concession fire over here on the east side? Can your fire truck get over there with, with the east side closed? With the proposed concrete, which I wasn't aware of before, that's going to increase the drainage problems. And this Fourth Street area has been a flood area for years and years and years. So we've had various requirements of other projects to take care of flood drainage. I appreciate your patience and your diligence. And I appreciate what Kansas Wesleyan is trying to do for the campus. But I think that we have to look at the whole picture. And we have to look into the future. We have to look at what happens to the environment. We have to look at terms of costs in the future. This is not a for-profit organization. All of their expenses come from either students or supporters. They're not paying taxes, they're not, uh, able to pay out of their profits to do these things. And I'm sure that the campus has many needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all of your service to the community in the past, Evelyn. And thank you for your comments. I should say, Mrs. Maxwell. Anyone else?
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Carolyn Peterson. I'm at twenty, fifty-two Leland Way. I did send an email to all of you with my feelings about the closing of, of Fourth Street, uh, the north and south. I highly support the closing of the east side. I think it's well-needed. I think it will enhance the, the, um, stadium. And I think it is something that should be done, I think, without hesitation. My biggest concern, I would invite you all to come live in my neighborhood, one of the hundred and fifty that Evelyn referred to, houses in that area, and know what it's like to get from that area downtown and not be diverted to overused streets. People, but going by schools that are already, um, have school zones or already have a lot of overuse, a lot of people that are backed up for left turns because there's no provision for that. I'd ask you to consider keeping the west side of Fourth Street as a two-way street and just enhancing the rest. The pedestrian crossing will be, um, taken care of by the, the, uh, the fences required, so there is no traffic crossing that section of Fourth Street. They will be diverted to the ends. It's wonderful to have green space and it's wonderful to have places of convenience to park. We all face those problems. But I think you're encouraging more problems by closing that small block that is such a vital piece. And I travel it six times a day and I've been watching. I'm never on that street alone. And I'm there for a minute. I'm always accompanied by at least four other people going one way or the other. That's just a very small window. So I kind of question the thousand piece of traffic that, that go there every day. So I appreciate your consideration and I do support Kansas Wesleyan. Matt's wonderful and what he's doing for the community is wonderful. But I do ask you to think about the traffic problems that it may cause.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Brenda O'Gorman. I live at seven oh five Victoria Heights Terrace. And, uh, one of the things that I would like to say that I was disappointed in the Planning Commission meeting is that many of the people who came to speak against this proposal accommodated Kansas Wesleyan because we are a community and we do support the college. But their main request was that the west side of Fourth Street remain open as a two-way street. And then after, uh, all of our ideas were presented, the President of Kansas Wesleyan, um, again, took the podium and said that their agreement with the railroad to lease the east side was not valid unless they closed the west side. And I think today, if that's the case. And I think today, if that's the case, it should be on the table early for you. I was very disappointed. I felt like, and I think that many of the people who were here felt it was futile to come to this meeting and be heard because of that. But I also support what Mrs. Peterson said. I travel Fourth Street often, and I really feel by totally closing Fourth Street is really going to congest other areas, and especially with the narrowing of Santa Fe. At the Planning Commission meeting, if I understood correctly, I think it was said that there were a traffic count, and this was prior to the closing of the lanes on Santa Fe, of a little over 2,000 cars that traveled Fourth Street on each of the northbound and southbound. So if that's the case, we're looking at somewhere between 4,500 and 5,000 cars. Those are citizens who, I think, depend on this short block to get to and from, particularly schools and churches. If you look at all of the schools of people trying to transport their students to South Middle School, to the St. Mary's Sacred Heart and the St. Mary Church Complex, to the Christian School, to Husner School, there's many of those people who use and depend on Fourth Street. And I think it is an artery we need to keep open to move north and southbound traffic in the heart of Salina. Also, I would like to say that I think that if we do not leave the west side of Fourth Street open, it's going to force people, when they come down Santa Fe, to turn onto Claflin and head west, which will cause, I think, increased problems, and there's been some problems in the past, with students who are crossing Claflin illegally in the middle of the block from the dorms over to the main part of the campus. And I think that that's a real hazard to increased traffic in that area. Also looking at going approaching Ninth Street from that direction, which I avoid totally because it's so congested, to try to make a left-hand turn on Ninth Street. But to go down Highland is another very difficult block to negotiate the way it's set up now. And then if you do go down Highland and you get to the stop sign at Highland and Cloud, because of the congestion on Ninth, that traffic often backs up past that intersection, and you're not able to make a right or left turn onto Cloud. And, you know, I really want to support Kansas Wesleyan in enhancing their campus, but at the same time, I think the citizens of Salina also deserve to have a traffic way that will help them navigate the city safely and efficiently. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Randall Holm, 848 Custer. Dear Commissioners, Madam Mayor, I want to thank you for your time and consideration allowing the public to speak on this. The one thing I think we really need to remember is that if this change is made, it's a permanent change. If we discover six weeks or six months or a year later that we shouldn't have, Kansas Wesleyan will have already invested over $1 million in making the changes, and we also will not have the opportunity to revert it, my understanding. So we really need to consider this strongly, and we don't need to be in a huge hurry because we need to be sure that the decision we make is not only a good decision for Kansas Wesleyan, but a good decision for the city as a whole. I grew up in Salina on Quincy Street, just three to four blocks from the section of Fourth Street that you're considering closing. My family still owns the house on Quincy Street. I also attended KWU my freshman year of college. Between that and being a lifelong resident of Salina, I'm very familiar with that section of road you're considering closing. I'm not aware of a single pedestrian injury accident on that stretch of road having happened in at least the last 40-plus years, if ever. I also regularly use that section of Fourth Street for parking when I attended KWU and when I attend events there. And even today, KWU doesn't have adequate parking when they have events, even with the use of the Catholic Church's parking. If you close those streets, you're going to be removing an additional 20 to 30 spaces at a minimum and maybe as many as 60. What's going to make up that parking loss? When Osborne Street, back in the winter of 2013, we were told that it needed to be changed to one-way because of safety concerns, we were told, those of us that opposed that change to one-way, were told, "Oh, you don't have to worry about Osborne being one-way or it being narrowed to the point that it couldn't safely be used for two-way traffic in the future because we're going to have Fourth Street to absorb that traffic, and it's only going to be people having to go a block out of their way." If it wasn't safe to be two-way in 2013, how can it be deemed to be safe today for two-way? What's really changed? The city of Salina is going to be investing between $5 to $9 million of taxpayer dollars in the downtown sports complex, and other investors are planning on investing at least that much more in additional funds, some of which will be coming from tax dollars paid or forgiven. Makes absolutely no sense to me to close down or severely change one of Salina's few good north-south trafficways to our downtown from south-central Salina. Yeah, in one hand, we're trying to improve the downtown area, and then the other way, we're making it harder for people to get there. As such, how does it make any sense to make it harder for that 10% to 20% of Salina residents to get to our downtown area by closing the only access to Santa Fe from so much of Salina? What traffic studies have been done to verify that this is a good thing to do or not a good thing to do? That closure is bound to increase traffic on a number of streets. Ninth Street, we just spent a lot of money at the intersection of Ninth and Cloud and south of Cloud on Ninth Street, trying to decrease a huge bottleneck in traffic when we had Fourth Street open. Closing Fourth Street has the potential to drastically increase that traffic on Ninth Street. Other streets that will be affected by increases in traffic are probably Roach, Quincy, and Highland, which means that will also mean potentially higher traffic near three or four grade schools for south and northbound traffic. There is also a high likelihood that traffic will also increase on Cloud Street and some of the areas on Wayne and Leslie, and over, and Wayne and Leslie near South Middle School and Sacred Heart High School, and on Quincy and Roach near Central High School. Traffic is also likely to increase on Republic and Crawford and perhaps even Ohio Street because of this change. We need to do a lot more research on just how traffic will be affected if that section of Fourth is closed. This should be done by traffic studies on all the streets mentioned during the school year to see what traffic is like with both sides of Fourth Street from Claflin to Cloud both open and closed, plus on all the other streets I mentioned during those same periods of time. And if you've been around any of our grade schools or middle schools or high schools when people are trying to get there to drop students off or get there to attend class or get there to work, there is huge congestion in those areas already during those periods. I think that the increases in traffic near many of our schools will become higher and more congested, and such put both grade school children, middle school, and other students more at risk, and also compound the traffic problems that those schools are already experiencing. As such, I ask you to turn down KWU's request to close either side of Fourth Street between Cloud and Claflin, or at a minimum postpone it so that much more in-depth studies of said consequences can be made so that we can determine what other options might need to be done or what is appropriate, really, to improve that section of town. What Kansas Wesleyan proposing would make a beautiful change, and I don't think anyone here will argue that, but beautification shouldn't be done when it will hurt the rest of the community for eternity. A lot of what, at least some of what they want to accomplish may be able to be accomplished without closing those streets. I ask you to vote no, or at a minimum to postpone saying yes till a lot more information's available for you to determine what's really correct for the community in the future. I thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you, Mr. Holm. Anyone else? Okay. Bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor, may I?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, I was waiting to give everybody a chance. I want to just follow up on a few points, and I appreciate the support that Kansas Wesleyan receives from everybody who spoke, as well as so many in the community. Just a couple of points I just want to share. We do have a parking arrangement, agreements with not only St. Mary's, the University United Methodist Church, as well as Salina Regional Health Center, who owns the old women's clinic on the corner of Fourth and Claflin there. So there is more parking there as in addition to the new parking we just put on along the north side of the sports complex. After hearing the great feedback from the last, from the open planning session, public hearing, we did work with the city to look at Osborne again as a way to try to ameliorate some of the concerns that were raised about closing Fourth Street. The idea that we're only asking traffic to move one block to the east and still be two-way and be able to be a route to continue to move north, and much of the traffic that's coming from southbound is coming up and then would have to jog over to either Osborne or to Fourth anyway, so it would be a part of the pattern there as well. This Union Pacific Railroad contract agreement is for both sides of the street. It is not a sort of negotiated either-or. It's all, and that's a great point that was raised, that was raised at the last meeting. And I would just raise that we'd prefer not to have somebody hit, a student be hit, before we have to make this decision. This is not just a beautification, but it is a safety issue for those 300-plus students who are crossing that street every day to go over there. So this will allow for better safety, as well as for better safety for the community to have the railroad enclosed between the two lanes of traffic, or between the two fences there.
Thank you. Madam Chairman.
Evelyn Maxwell, 414 East Wayne. Regarding the parking, I appreciate what the gentleman was saying about parking along the railroad. That's been used a lot. It's been used by St. Mary's before they closed for construction, and I don't know what construction is going on now. All I see is some pallets on the side of the road, and that road is still closed. Anyway, Kansas Wesleyan and University Church do have an agreement in terms of allowing them to use our parking lot. However, in the last year, we've had two times when we've had to turn people from Kansas Wesleyan events away from our church because we had a large event occurring at the same time. So they do need more parking.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Carolyn Peterson, 2052 Leland Way. I would just say in reference, as in the email I included to you, I'm not sure if anyone from the city has been in contact with Union Pacific regarding the lease that the city currently holds on that north, on the west side of that. You know, what we're hearing is that Kansas Wesleyan says it's, you know, it's an all or nothing for both closing. I think it would behoove all of us to note, to be able to negotiate with Union Pacific to hear if there is an alternative for those to be separate leases.
Brenda O'Gorman, 705 Victoria Heights Terrace. I agree with Mrs. Peterson about at least exploring the alternative of negotiating with the railroad that perhaps the west side of Fourth Street could remain open. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Going, going, gone. I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 16-10833 on first reading, which would include the permanent closure of the east side of South Fourth Street and the setback exceptions requested by Kansas Wesleyan University.
Second.
Is that the east side or the west side on 10833?
East side.
East side, okay. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 16-10833. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. 8.3B.
Item 8.3B, first reading ordinance number 16-10832, requesting closure and vacation of the west side of South Fourth Street between Claflin Avenue and Cloud Street.
And just for clarification, the item that we looked at, the east side, was specifically between the railroad and Kansas Wesleyan. On this side, the city of Salina is a property owner, and my shading kind of disappeared, but just so everybody's clear, what we have is we have a 100-foot railroad right-of-way that goes between Claflin and Cloud Street. There was a right-of-way over here for the east side of Fourth Street. That was vacated in 2013. Then over here, we still have a right-of-way dedication that varies between 39 and 36 feet. It's not absolutely straight, but that is outside the boundaries of the 100-foot rail right-of-way. So this is being treated as a separate and different item because on the west side, the city of Salina still owns that strip of right-of-way. And that right-of-way dedication dates back to 1886, when the grounds of Kansas Wesleyan University was laid out. And by that time, the Salina and southwestern rail line was already in place, and it was going down the center of Fourth Street, and public right-of-way was platted on both sides of the 100-foot railroad right-of-way. As we noted, on the east side, that was vacated in 2013. It is still in place on the west side within that area. To add to the confusion, part of the road is in the rail right-of-way, part of the road is in the city's right-of-way, but the pavement there is between 33 and 36 feet wide, and a portion of that is in the city's right-of-way, and a portion of it is in the lease area from the railroad. So John, if you could please go to the slide that depicts the lease area in the red. Yeah, we'll start with this one, but the, what you have here in this slide is, on the east right-hand side, is a 33-foot-wide strip of rail right-of-way that Kansas Wesleyan is proposing to lease from the railroad. On the west side, you have a 33-foot-wide strip of land that Kansas Wesleyan is proposing to lease from the Union Pacific Railroad. And so that leaves a clear corridor for the railroad of 34 feet of that 100-foot right-of-way. And now that Kansas Wesleyan has a conceptual agreement with the Union Pacific Railroad in order to provide an expanded campus for their facilities west of Fourth Street, they have filed a vacation petition, which is petition 4371, requesting the permanent closure and vacation of the west or southbound side of Fourth Street between Claflin and Cloud. And so the area that's here in the red box is right-of-way that the city gave up and was vacated in 2013. What is here in the blue box is the right-of-way that the city still has and is being requested for vacation. And the purpose for vacating that is so that the property can revert back to Kansas Wesleyan University, and their plan is to convert that vacated right-of-way and the strip of land that they're leasing from the railroad to a bus drop-off area, parking, and a green space, as you saw in the slides in Dr. Thompson's presentation. If this request is approved, then the ownership of that strip of- of that strip of land would revert back to Kansas Wesleyan University. And as stated, their goals are to unify their campus by eliminating the divide created by Fourth Street, to enhance the safety of students and visitors by not having to cross an open public street, and to hopefully beautify the corridor between the main campus and stadium. And as we pointed out pursuant to a policy resolution adopted by the City Commission, they requested that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing on this request, which they did on April 5, 2016. And they focused on emergency vehicle access, they focused on traffic flow and safety, and they focused on land use and, and future development. So this was referred to and reviewed by the Salina Fire Department. They concluded that the closure and elimination of Fourth Street would not lower response times from Station 2 below acceptable levels. Instead of using Fourth Street, emergency vehicles going southbound would use Osborne Street, which is 29 feet wide currently, and today is used with an eight-foot parking lane and 21-foot driving lane. It was important to the Fire Department that the fire lane along the east side of the Student Activities Center be provided, and that was addressed on the plans. There was a traffic study, and this kind of goes back to how long Kansas Wesleyan's been working with the railroad and, and been trying to make some progress on this, but back in 2006, there was a traffic study that was performed by Wilson and Company that looked at the potential closure of Fourth Street. And they concluded that the peak hour intersection traffic operations at the surrounding intersections would not degrade significantly if Fourth Street was closed to traffic. They concluded that most traffic would shift to Claflin and to Osborne Street. And we did note there that when the study was performed, the assumption was that Osborne would be a two-way and not a one-way street. But they looked at Cloud and Highland, they looked at Fourth Street south of Cloud, they looked at Claflin and Osborne, and Cloud at Osborne. And by their standards that they look at, they, they characterize those as low-volume intersections that would not be negatively impacted by the diversion of traffic. They did recommend that parking not be allowed on the west side of Osborne, and they main, they recommended maintaining some form of emergency access on any closed roadway, which is being proposed along the Student Activities Center. The other two factors that you need to find is that no private rights will be injured or endangered by the street closure, and that the general public will suffer no loss or inconvenience. Again, Kansas Wesleyan owns all the property on both sides of this section of street, so there's not any other private property owner that will be impacted. And again, the question of loss and inconvenience is a little more subjective, but there was a traffic study done that concluded that the level of surface at the surrounding intersections will not be significantly degraded. Also, as part of this request, I think we have a drawing there, John, that shows utilities. This yellow line here represents a gas line that feeds most of Salina, including the downtown area, and so it's a very important gas line. So Kansas Gas Service took a strong interest in this request and reviewed the plan submitted by Kansas Wesleyan. We also have a water line on, under the west side of Fourth Street, and neither utility objected to the closure of Fourth Street or the vacation of right-of-way as long as a utility easement is retained. So the Planning Commission looked at this, again separately. The, it is an independent decision from the east side, and they also, on that question, voted eight to zero to recommend that the petition to vacate the west side of South Fourth Street be approved, subject to four conditions. Condition one was that Kansas Wesleyan construct a fire access lane along the east side of the Student Activities Center to ensure continued emergency vehicle access to all campus buildings and facilities. Kansas Wesleyan should be responsible for the cost of all pavement removal on Fourth Street. Kansas Wesleyan be responsible for the installation of a crosswalk on Cloud Street opposite the south entrance gate to the stadium. The belief being that majority of people traveling off, from off-site would be parking in the parking lot south of Cloud, and so there's an entrance gate right over here, and so having a crosswalk to direct people who are parking south of Cloud to cross, to get to that primary gate. And then the fourth condition, that the vacated right-of-way be retained as a utility easement. And once again, the, the Planning Commission made four findings in support of their recommendation for closure and vacation. And the options that you have before you, dealing with the west side, would be to approve the vacation petition and approve ordinance 1610832, subject to whatever conditions you think are appropriate. You could postpone consideration of this vacation petition to allow additional information to be provided by staff or the petitioner, or you could recommend denial of the petition upon a finding that the closure of Fourth Street would result in loss and inconvenience to the general public. If that's the option you choose, you should make a recommendation as to whether the west side of Fourth Street should be a one-way or two-way street. Once again, the findings that are in the draft ordinance are based on the Planning Commission's findings in support of Kansas Wesleyan's request. If you are not supportive, then staff and the city attorney would be available to assist you with developing alternative findings. But the, the primary distinction here is that this is city-owned right-of-way. The decision is yours. It's not the railroad's. This is your right-of-way, and so you have the discretion to decide whether you want to retain it or to vacate it, in which case that strip of land would revert from your ownership to Kansas Wesleyan, and it would be this area right here. So we've, we've got gas and water lines going through here, so this would be retained as an easement. We have a fire lane that would provide access into that area there, a crosswalk that would be installed here opposite the south gate here, and those were the conditions that were recommended by the Planning Commission. With that, I'd be open to any specific questions you have about the west side.
Just a few. Did the artist rendition of the completed green space in camp, did that include the fire or emergency vehicle lane?
Yes. It's, it's difficult to pick, but it's, the roadway itself ends here, but here there is a, a brick hardscape that is wide enough to provide a fire access lane from here around the edge of the Student Activities Center, and then going into the, the center portion of campus.
Okay.
So it, it would be a private improvement, but it was important, if Fourth Street was eliminated, to have that as an alternative means. So that was why that was one of the conditions of Planning Commission recommendation.
Okay, and does the crosswalk on Cloud opposite the south entrance to the stadium, does that have a pedestrian, you know, like a school lights, we have it in our elementary schools, kids can push a button, they can get across the street?
At this point, it does not, but I'll defer that to, to Mr. Stack, but at this point, it would just be a marked crosswalk with signage, but not any kind of signal.
Because I'm guessing Cloud is more dangerous to cross than Fourth Street is, particularly if, you know, there would be more traffic on Cloud.
John, you have, you have my slides on the right-of-way, the traffic counts, and the other closures, if you could go to those.
Because there is one further east on Cloud, isn't there?
That's on Osborne.
That's at Osborne?
At Osborne.
Yeah, okay.
Osborne has a stop sign.
Is there a button that the kids can push to get to the school, to the grade school?
There is a button there on that Osborne.
Have they opened that stop sign?
Yeah, I think there's a button there.
Which is, this is part of the factual record that the Planning Commission had in, in front of them, but the, just for point of reference here, these are the 2014 traffic counts from both KDOT and the Engineering Department. These are reviewed by the Planning Commission, but you can see by far, Cloud Street carries more traffic than South Fourth Street. And so Cloud Street is the busiest of the streets. And then Claflin Avenue on the piece between Santa Fe and Ninth Street has a, a concentrated area that the traffic counts are much lower going to the east. Santa Fe Avenue going north from Claflin carries 4,000 vehicles a day. Highland and Fourth Street, south of Cloud, are both slightly less than 1,000. And then this, this was the most recent traffic count, when the northbound lanes for Fourth Street were open, and there were about 1,076 cars per day. John, if you could go to the other closures. The other thing, just for historical reference.
Is, is there a Fourth Street, now maybe I'm missing it, south of?
You want to go back to that, John? We still have a question.
Yeah, I just miss it.
Are you talking about north of, north of Cloud and south of Claflin, that is the section we're talking about?
Yeah, right, that runs alongside the.
This, this is the portion that runs alongside the stadium and campus, 1,076 cars a day. This, when you get to Fourth Street north of Claflin, it drops down to 800 because a number of the vehicles that, when they get to Claflin, turn left or right, primarily left. These, this is Fourth Street, south of Cloud, going towards South Middle School.
Okay, but now where's Fourth Street, south between Claflin and Cloud?
We do not have a separate count for that. It's, it's going to be roughly equivalent to this number, but there was not a separate count for that. The count was for northbound traffic going from Cloud to Claflin.
I don't sit there and do a stat, but my guess is more people go south to get to Cloud and come up from Cloud. I don't know, but that's, because that's what we're, what we're proposing closing is the one measurement we don't have.
Were these counts so done with the assumption that, that section was closed? I mean, is that why it's left out?
No, they were, they were just done to get a reading of what, what these different segments were. They weren't, it wasn't, it wasn't done for any specific purpose, other than in 2014, traffic counts throughout the city were updated.
Dean, related to a couple of questions of Commissioner Davis, one had to do with the, the, like a push-button pedestrian crossing. Wasn't there an upgraded crossing put in on Cloud Street, just a little west of Osborne, as part of the last project?
I'll let Mr. Stack address that.
Yes, yes, there is, for sure. There's a kind of a newer signal there for push-button pedestrian signal that was coordinated with St. Mary's and Kansas Wesleyan during this whole project.
Called like the Hawk or something like that. The, the other thing is, is it relates to the relationship between Fourth Street and Cloud Street. If, if, just strictly that topic, if neither lanes of Fourth Street are open, they're both closed to, to traffic, in essence, that would eliminate turn movements right there on the Cloud Street. So that would actually create a safer environment.
Yes.
Strictly as it relates to turn movements, wouldn't it?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, the.
At that intersection.
At that intersection.
But it's going to make it worse at the intersections east and west.
Well.
Cars have to go somewhere.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to make, make sure that it was clear that there is an upgraded traffic, or a pedestrian crossing signal specifically for that between Kansas Wesleyan and the Catholic school to try to accommodate that. So if someone would choose to go down to Osborne today, the signal's not right at Osborne. If they would just choose to, just run across there, that would be a problem, but it would anywhere in town. But in this case, we have an upgraded signal that they can use, so that crossing movement, if folks utilize it, actually should create a safe environment for that crossing.
Now, the parking lot that folks go into Kansas Wesleyan can use at the Catholic school, that's closer to the south entrance to the football field, because I would think that's where you'd need the.
Yeah.
Intersection for safety.
It was moved further west from the original location.
Right.
A few hundred feet.
Well, the, where do you talk?
The, the new traffic signal, can you show Proximer?
It's right at Osborne. It's right at Osborne.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is still at Osborne.
It's still at Osborne, yeah. Immediately, right, it's right.
Okay.
Right there. Yeah, that one's at Osborne. What we're talking about is a crosswalk here as well. Just like, like City Manager was saying, there won't be any, near as many movements in this area and congestion.
So the parking lot is actually further east?
Parking lot's right here.
Yeah, okay. That's what I couldn't visualize.
So yeah, you'd have to go, depending on what side of the stadium you're going in, but yeah, you'd have to.
Right.
Go over here and cross if you want to use the signal. Otherwise, you go over here and cross and find a gap.
Because that's not that far.
Dan, don't we find that the kids at the school actually use the, that the teachers lead them across using the signal?
Yeah, the point of putting it over here was the, this is right where St. Mary's kids come out and cross. So that was, that was kind of the, you know, the, that's probably happens more often than maybe the, the football games or the ones, I don't know how often, how many years, or how many of those have. They have quite a few events here, so people will still use this, and if they're, I mean, most people just walk across the street. So if they want to use the signal, they can. It's there for a safety, but a lot of people just go across the street.
Adults can usually dodge cars a little easier than kids.
Just go across the street. It's not a very wide road, 30 mile an hour design, or speed there typically. And what's nice is, if this does close, there will be a pretty nice spot here, and actually a reduced width for, for a crossing there. So that's, that's, that's where their ticket area is. And so that would be, you know, we'd like to send you to that spot. You don't necessarily have to go there, but that'd be a nice, that'd be a better spot for people to cross. Putting a signal there would be pretty tough, because it's a, it's a railroad crossing and all kinds of lights, and it would be very hard to put another signal there, any kind of flashing lights. It'll just be a marked crosswalk.
And if I could, I guess, rephrase one of the questions, one the citizens brought up. I'm assuming there was some criteria which determined that Osborne was, was not adequate for two-way traffic. Has anything changed with that reasoning to now say that Osborne is safe for parking and two-way traffic after it's been narrowed? I mean, if the logic worked in one.
Right.
Way at one time, if nothing, in fact, only change is that we're going to put more traffic on it, and now we're saying it's adequate for what it wasn't adequate for two years ago.
Yeah, I guess, I don't remember exactly the context of adequate or inadequate. We have a lot of 29-foot streets in town that are two-way traffic, and the question is really about parking and fire access. So, you know, we don't always have parking on 29-foot streets. There's a lot of residential areas we do. So it's, it's, a lot of cities have much less, narrower, narrower streets than we do here in Salina with two-way traffic, and you just, I mean, people park, and you just have to, you just yield. That's just the way it works. And so, in looking at this, this is a pretty important fire route, so we had to say, okay, you know, limiting it to one side only, traffic, or parking gives you still 20 and a half feet. So I don't know if we looked at it differently or more, or, you know, it's just, it's a.
I'm just guessing those other 29-foot streets don't have a huge athletic complex on one side, and a university, and no companion street east and, and west of them.
Yeah, the, also, Osborne has a sidewalk on this side, too, so there's a five-foot sidewalk, which is also helpful in case, in case something were to happen. You've got an extra five foot of width there before you actually hit a fence. So that's.
Dan, is there something at Osborne and Cloud that triggers the light? Because otherwise, people are going to, I, I did this many times just to figure out what it was going to be like.
It's a little bit of a change.
Because I used to travel forth all the time, probably two, three times a day, going south. So I went down to Osborne, and like I say, I sat at that stop sign for quite a while, and this was on a Sunday. And so I can't see how that's going to work without some kind of light or something to trigger the light to stop those folks on Cloud, so that the people on Osborne can go one way or the other. That is, if we put, I, I just don't see how that's going to work.
The, the lights are push-button. So in other words, if there are. So in other words, if there's no one there who wants to.
For pedestrians.
For pedestrians. Otherwise, yeah, and if, if you don't have a pedestrian who's going to push it to create the safe path across, then you're going to be free to drive through it.
Right. And, and you sit there for a long time before you get a chance to go.
What time on a Sunday was it?
It was about, I don't know, it was probably about 11:00.
AM?
On a Sunday, but I went other times.
It's church time. I was just saying, it's a pretty busy time sometimes over there.
But at that time, it wasn't. It was after. But I've, I traveled that other times during the week too, and I, I don't see how it's going to work if you, if, if we close forth.
It really doesn't change though, does it? I mean, it's.
Well, it.
The one way you're going out now is going to be.
There's no signal there though.
Whether it's one way or two ways, it's going to be the same.
Well, it probably won't change a whole lot because on Fourth Street, there's, you just stop there and wait for an hour or two to get around the corner.
Right.
And it's the same way on Osborn. But, but they, but at that time, you had Osborn and Fourth Street. So if we close Fourth Street, you just got Osborn.
Well, and we just, we just, I mean, the, the traffic study, people will just spread out more. I mean, it's just, you go Highland, Quincy, Roach, there's just a lot of other streets to take over. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, you'll definitely have, you'll have some impacts, but the bottom line was the, it wasn't impacts that are going to just totally snarl traffic in Salina. It's just, it's going to be a little more delay here and there and depends on the time of day you're there. And you'll either choose to drive there or you won't. But you'll have other options. So you'll have other options to do that. And the Kansas Wesleyan beautification of the area is, it's something you have to weigh versus those, those inconveniences of some traffic.
One thing to think about, Commissioners, when you're, when you're looking at traffic signalization, it could be here, it could be anywhere, it doesn't matter. You go back to those manual and uniform traffic control device warrants, MUTCD warrants. And, and they address the typical level of service, they'll address peak situations. And until you get to that, and this is pretty far from it, until you get to that, there's no need to do that. And if you did that, if you, if you decided to go far and above that at one location and you extrapolated that to other locations, you would have millions of dollars worth of traffic signals that would not be called for and have that burden on your budget. So this is always an intersection we can pay close attention to afterwards. And again, look at traffic and see if we have a change. And if so, and we believe it does trigger that, you can react and do that if you'd like to. So we, you certainly have that opportunity later if you want to do that. I wanted to hit the, the fire question again, if I could, to the best that I can. I don't have that report in front of me right now, so I, I can't say for certain. I'm going to rely on some memories. But initially, we were looking at, if you go into the fire code, it talks about, I think, a 20-foot wide width for, for a fire truck. Okay, Kevin may be able to help address that. But what, I believe the context of the conversation was then, was 20 feet to set up. And in this case, you think, well, you have two-way traffic, you don't have 20 feet. But in essence, you do, because if somebody's in that lane, they're going to get, they're going to get towed out of there really fast. So we looked at it and said, as long as you have two lanes, two-way traffic, you will have the 20-foot, you will meet the intent of that code and can set up for a fire at that location. So I think when this came out, came about, we said, let's bring our whole team back together, let's re-talk about that and, and why we didn't go with two-way at that point in time and talk about it again. But we came to the, to the conclusion that we do feel that that does meet the intent of the fire code. And as Dan mentioned, it's better than a lot of the other residential streets because a lot of those, you have actually parking on both sides.
Right.
And you can, you're lucky if you can get two cars on a two-way street meeting at all there because of the widths. And that is a lot more, and, and, and in those areas, you have more concentrated on street parking because of being in the core part of town, not having any driveways or single car driveways where, you know, no one likes to line up their car in the driveway and take turns pulling out so someone else can come out. So one car always ends up on the road. And you don't always have a place to pull over for an emergency vehicle to get through. In this case, we determine the emergency vehicle can get through. So from that perspective, we're very, very comfortable with the two lanes over there. You can look at it a lot of ways. We could say ideally, you take parking off the street and you have two wider lanes and you have a better situation. If you go back to kind of core neighborhoods and what you want to do, slightly narrower lanes, as long as they're within a safe, a safe width, and parking tends to slow traffic down. And that's not a bad thing either in a neighborhood area. So it all depends on what you want to put weight on. But we're pretty comfortable that, at this point, after we're looking at it, that you can have two-way traffic and parking on the east side and be good with that.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Any Commissioner?
But following that, what was the logic for saying the street was not adequate for two-way traffic two years ago?
I think it was the, like City Manager said, the, you only think you have one lane. But you really, you have more than one lane. If you are the emergency vehicle and people have to get over, you have both lanes at that point. So that was the, maybe the mislogic at the time that we didn't think we had both lanes.
Because if cars are parked on the east side and people are leaving, again, they're not going to be in a straight lineup against that curb like they were in that photo. They're going to be, you know, they're going to be taking a lane and a half. And they can't get out of the way because traffic on Ninth Street, I mean, on Cloud is coming from Ninth Street. And when that lets up, people from Highland turn on it. So there's a steady stream of cars going east on, on Cloud. And that's the difficulty making a left turn on Cloud. There's never a break in the traffic. You, you think the light at Ninth Street's going to stop them, but then everybody else is turning on, it keeps coming. Then you got the cars coming from the east. So I, you know, I think, well, your fire truck will probably start taking out the streets and people will learn you have to go down to Roach and then down to something. But I don't see a fire truck getting through there if, if there's a lot of cars.
Commissioners, we, we can, we can watch that. I think sometimes we've got to be careful.
If that's the case, we'll have to deal with that.
Yeah, we need to be careful on an assumption there. But if, if it is, you have a lot of options. You mentioned a permit before. We haven't used permit parking. We could. We could say if you live on that east side, you have two permit tags, you can use them however you'd like, but you have two. And it's posted permit parking only. And if on game day you want to park there, Kansas Wesleyan, we can ask them to kind of make sure everybody, that their fans know that and any information that goes out, you know, if they would do that, that'd be great. So there's an educational opportunity there. And if someone parks there, they get towed. It's really that simple. So there, there are tools, you probably, I don't believe you're going to need to get to that, but there are tools, if we do find there's an issue, we can come back to and look at. And you could contemplate at that point in time, whether you remove on-street parking or whether you permit the parking or how you want to do that. So we could, we could look at that.
It would be busy today on Fourth Street to get through on a game day. So I mean, those are just issues we'll have to, we'll have to look at for a fire truck to get through today, even on, on the, on the Fourth Street that's open. So that, that is a concern, but haven't had that issue. I don't, I don't know how many times we've had that issue. We could ask them.
It's what, a 12-game schedule in total for the year, isn't it? For, how many games do you, football games do you have?
Five to six at home.
Yeah, that's what I was going to get to. Right.
Soccer.
Yeah, so soccer, you won't have that. Football, you're talking.
Sixteen per year.
Five, six.
Right.
So you're talking peak times that don't really occur very often. And like I said, if you, if you want your traffic control devices to deal with those peak times that happen, half, half a dozen times, even a dozen times a year, that are very sporadic in their impact, even during the day, you're really asking for a different level across the community, I think, in that case.
Right.
I think, I think you're going to find that this will be okay and that if for some reason we look at it and there's some things that we need to tweak, you're going to have some tools still to do that.
Well, frankly, the 20, 29-foot width with one side parking actually gives you about four feet more driveline than parking on both sides of a typical residential street because they're only 32 feet wide. And so I don't really see a safety issue with having that 20. It's not, it wouldn't concern me.
Unless it's your house that's on fire and the truck's trying to get to you.
Okay, well, we've, we've probably talked this out enough. Did you have something else, Dean?
I was just going to mention that the origin for the, the concept of making Osborn one-way was the very first concept that was put forward by Wilson and Company had Osborn being 21 feet wide instead of 29 feet wide. And if it was 21 feet wide, it absolutely had to be a one-way street. Then we were able to get it back from 21 to 29 feet and the concept of leaving it one-way stuck. But Mr. Blanchard is correct that if you have parking on both sides of Fourth Street as it was before, when it was one-way south, the area available to emergency vehicles is narrower there than it would be on Osborn with parking on one side.
Thank you, Dean. I'm going to bring it back to the Commission for Action. Have you commented on this particular? Okay, come on up, Randall.
Randall Holm, Custer Street, Salina. I'm going to ask you again to turn this down. And one of the major reasons is safety. Plus traffic. If you close both sections of Fourth Street, you've eliminated one more street for people to turn left or right on and get out of the way of emergency vehicles. You're keeping, you're moving people to other streets going north and south in Salina, which is going to put more traffic at our grade schools, more traffic at our junior high school and that. Because Fourth Street won't be there to be able to be used. I think it's a whole lot better to have adults or semi-adults age 18 and older looking both ways before they cross the street, rather than having to worry about the additional traffic at grade schools and how that might affect true youth. At an absolute minimum, I think if you are going to approve this closure, you ought to ask Kansas Wesleyan what their intent is for Highland Avenue, seeing as they've been busy acquiring all this property on both Highland and Ninth Street from Claflin to Cloud Street also. Are they going to be coming forward and asking you to close Highland Street also at some point in the future? If we do close it, I think there should be lighted traffic signals at Osborn and at Highland both, and it ought to be paid for and maintained by Kansas Wesleyan. Because the increased traffic on those two streets will be a direct result of this closure. If you have gone down Highland lately, it is almost impossible to make a left turn on the Cloud Street. Because the Ninth Street traffic from the light is heavy enough. And when it isn't heavy coming from Ninth Street, it seems to be coming from the, the east. And you sit there and you park and cars get backed up behind you, sometimes clear to Claflin Street. You need to keep in mind that on Osborn and Claflin, when there's a fire or an need for an emergency vehicle, traffic may be backed up a block when that emergency vehicle tries to turn onto that block to make a run. That is extremely time-sensitive. My father had a heart attack on Quincy Street and our emergency responders did a wonderful job getting there quick when Fourth Street was open. I worry what the response time increase will be for other people in that neighborhood if you close Fourth Street. Thank you.
You make good points. Thank you, Randall. Anyone else?
I'll wait.
I just have a, a question of Mr. Andrews. On his traffic study that was done in 2014, what time period was that done? Was that when the schools were open and the, the increased traffic from, from all of that activity was taken into consideration? And also, I'd like to point out that 2014 was before they narrowed the streets on Santa Fe, which I think there's been more traffic forced over to Fourth Street because of that.
Thank you. I think that was directed to you, Mr. Andrews. If you know, if you remember when that.
Mr. Stack, we'll have to look that up as to what, what month that occurred in. It was in calendar year, and the, the traffic counts are 24-hour counts, so they reflect the number of vehicles in a 24-hour period, not reflecting any particular peaks.
Mr. Andrews, while, while you're there, just a quick question. You made reference earlier to 2006 traffic study that was done by Wilson and Company?
Yes.
Were there significant differences between the, between the results of the two studies? Or were they fairly similar?
Well, the, the traffic counts were similar, but the, the conclusion of the traffic study was that there would be increased traffic at Cloud and Highland and increased traffic at Osborn and Cloud as a result of the closure of Fourth Street, but not to the point where that would significantly degrade how those function or create the need for any special traffic control devices.
Okay.
And again, that was a 2006 study that was paid for by Kansas Wesleyan and done by Wilson and Company.
Okay.
Just to follow up on that, those are total vehicles per day.
Those are total vehicles per day in a 24-hour period.
But it's not broken down into vehicles on school days, going in and out of school, church days, game days, football, basketball, soccer?
What Wilson and Company did, the numbers that are here are 24-hour daily numbers. What Wilson and Company did is they looked at the peak hours associated with church, school use, activities, those things, and they projected the numbers at those intersections during the peak hours. That is what they studied. And they found that none of those intersections fell below a level of service that is accepted throughout the rest of the community.
Explain that last part again, I'm sorry.
Mr. Stack, in, there's a system A through F of levels of service of intersections. And none of the changes that would result, as a result of closing Fourth Street, would make any intersection, whether it's Highland and Cloud or Claflin and Ninth, or any of those, have a level of service that was not acceptable.
That level of service would include time it takes to make a turn?
Correct.
Okay. I guess, I don't do scientific studies, but enough sat there a long time making that left turn. Because, because that's what's going to irritate local residents if they have to sit there and take a long time.
Dan, when you talk about level of service, if you're a, a B, I think is what you mentioned earlier, I don't know if that's applicable with all the intersections we've talked about. But how, how long, if you can answer that, would somebody expect to wait to make a turn with a B-level of service intersection? Because it takes a lot long, when you're sitting in a, an automobile.
It seems like forever, but a minute or two.
It seems like it takes forever, but 30 seconds is really not very long.
B's, B's pretty good. Now, you know, if you get to a C or a D, then it starts getting to be quite a bit longer. But still, we're just talking a minute or two.
Right, because if I'm going west on Claflin, I know now, don't go down to Highland to get to Cloud, go over to Ninth. Everybody has that idea, well, that block on Ninth between Cloud and Claflin is backed up to the intersection, so it'll take longer to get through the intersection at Cloud. So people will try to plan to get around things. All it does is, some street eventually has to absorb the traffic. And if it's, you know, time-consuming and aggravating, I realize here, we're talking a minute or two, which in a big city, but wouldn't even figure into the count, to get used to getting places in short periods of time here. So consequently, I said, well, I just won't go down there at all.
This was, one of the things, Ninth and Cloud has been improved since the study was done. So that's, that's helpful, I think, to the whole, to the whole area. But yeah, the, the level of service wasn't, wasn't, I mean, all of our streets in town, I mean, you could go to different streets and have to wait a minute or two at maximum at a, I mean, that's pretty long actually in Salina. It's not very often you wait that long at any intersection that I've ever been at. So maybe at Ohio and Crawford, you wait a while to do the darn cycle. Other than that, we just don't have to worry about that around here.
Right, because for, for young drivers, you know, the two minutes aren't a problem, but what a young driver will do is try to jump into a smaller hole in the traffic because they don't want to wait, rather than.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely have to.
Us, the old enough to sit there and wait.
Monitor accidents, that's, that's what we have to do in this, in this area and at any of our intersections. We, we don't have, it's one of the, every year, KDOT asks us for hotspots, if you have any hotspot intersections that have lots of accidents. So that's something we have to monitor constantly or consistently and deal with it if it happens. So it's, that's something we'll have to consider.
Is there anything that would be learned from another study that might predict traffic patterns now? Or do you think the information there would not be different?
Yeah, that, that study was really comprehensive. This is the ver, summary version of it, but the things about this thick, they, I mean, they looked at Claflin, they looked at Ninth and Cloud, they looked at the whole area, closing Fourth Street, the peak hours, and then the KDOT counts are just for, for a day, but they're pretty consistent with what they found in 2006. So it's not a lot, I mean, you could go, you could go take the counts now or you could wait till school's out and take them again. I don't know if it's going to matter a whole lot in that, in that case. I guess that's just, we could sure do it if you want us to, but we don't, we don't foresee any reason that it's going to make a big change or, and, and really help you make a decision. You've got the data here to make it at this time, we believe. Thank you.
One more comment, and then we're, we're going to get on with some action here.
Evelyn Maxwell, 414 East Wayne.
Evelyn Maxwell, 414 East Wayne. In terms of the wait time on Fourth Street, as you approached Cloud from the junior middle, the middle school, I waited behind about, I think I was the sixth car from Fourth Street, I mean, from Cloud on Fourth Street trying to turn, and one car would turn, but then you had to wait a while for traffic, and then another car would turn. So it took a little while to get that cleared out. I imagine three or four minutes anyway to do that. And then on the little strip of Fourth Street, I was the fourth car behind three that were trying to negotiate across the railroad track and to continue on Fourth. According to what information we had before, it's possible that the count in 2014 was done after the closure of going north on Osborne. So that would need to be clarified as to whether, what that count really tells us. And in terms of game times, I think there's 281 days of school, and Kansas Wesleyan has a very high count of activities that take place in the new complex. It's much more than six or eight, and these are daytime activities. I was counting. I don't remember what it was, I've got it written down at home, but it seems like it was 100 and some. I think I counted only 81 days of school days, it didn't have some kind of an activity at Kansas Wesleyan on Fourth Street. So the situation, as the gentleman said, has changed considerably, and we haven't even talked about the cost to the public in terms of driving extra distance, the cost to the environment, children's health in terms of the contamination of the air from the motor gases. We're not all on electric yet, maybe someday we will, but those are considerations that we need to look at in terms of the health of the community.
Thank you, Evelyn. I'm gonna bring this back to the Commission for Action. Discussion?
I move that we approve on first reading ordinance number 16-10832, vacating the west side of South Fourth Street from Claflin Avenue to Cloud Street.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
No, I think the idea of having a large unified campus is good, but something just doesn't seem like it's been planned completely for this traffic to get around the campus. Now, what will eventually happen, if it's closed, people won't have a choice, so they will have to come up with a new route, and new routes will be established. But the way the streets are configured now, I just think getting around that campus is gonna be difficult, and we're gonna have to be very open to the fact that some adjustments will have to be made in traffic patterns or the way the streets or lights are configured relatively soon. That just, I don't know how you'd study this, but the street's still open, because when people have an option, they can go through, I mean, to predict what it would be like when the street's not there. I'm sure there are people who make a living doing that, but I just see a lot of congestion. But people, people will adjust, and they'll go out of their way to go around that area, but it's gonna be inconvenient for getting south of Cloud to the middle school and getting that traffic to come back up towards downtown.
I would argue that drivers, human beings, can adapt. I live on Highland, and either whether I go north or if I go south, I gotta deal with traffic, either on Crawford or Cloud. And you know what? I adapt. When I get to Crawford, I'll say, well, I wanna go to one place, I can either go left, right, and go straight. I've done all three to go to the same place. It's just a matter of the traffic pattern, the time of day, it doesn't really bother me, one way or the other. I think that, you know, taking the 200-year view, I think 200 years from now, people will say, why in the world did they put all this concrete all over the creation? We don't even use roads anymore. And that is the kind of, I think they will be applauding the green spaces that we have. I think that it's time to stitch Kansas Wesleyan back together, to make it one unified campus. Kansas Wesleyan has done a tremendous job of making the core vibrant, vital, and beautiful, and I think this is the last step in the process of making the university something that can be a crown jewel in Salina's crown. And I think that, you know, people come up to you and talk to you between experiences too, about topics they're interested in, concerned about. All you generally hear about are people that are against something, and those are the people that are most vocal, those are the people that generally have the strongest opinion. But on this particular opinion, I had, you know, one guy stopped me in Dillon's and said, man, I really hope you close down Fourth Street. And I said, huh, why? And he said, I think it's good for the university. And when I started hearing people for something, it made a bigger impact on the way I was thinking than just a normal run-of-the-mill subject. So I think that what we're doing here will have a positive impact, not just on the university, but also on the surrounding neighborhood. And I think that, and when I heard that Osborne was, could be considered as a two-way street, I felt like that is probably a benefit for the residents that live on Osborne. I know if I lived there, I probably would prefer to have a two-way street instead of a one-way street anyway. I think that all of those things can be adapted to, and I think that, in the big picture, that for the betterment of Salina, that this ordinance should be passed.
Well, I'm gonna reluctantly agree with you. I mean, you make good points, but I think the city needs to be very diligent in monitoring traffic patterns, safety patterns, not just at Osborne, but also in the students crossing Claflin to get from the dorms over to the campus. All those little traffic areas are gonna, they're gonna get a little worse. You know, most big universities you can't cut through anyway, so as far as actual tenths of a mile a person will have to drive to get around campus, we're not really talking about a big issue here. But safety needs to be considered, because crossing Cloud Street's gonna get a whole lot harder.
Commissioner-
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, there's a lot of ways to look at stuff, and when we give you something, we obviously give you the baseline of where we're at today. That's just typically what we do and how we look at things. You could look at it, and you could also ask yourself and say, let's pretend there was never two lanes on Fourth Street, there was never a Fourth Street through there, it's just a railroad track. Never was, never happened. And to the point that there are few north-south ways we can go there that are there today, other than that, but, you know, I'll call it nuisance level of traffic. At some point, we wanna cut another way north and south to help out, but it's not anything that you'd say is seriously needed, but it would help kind of alleviate some minor motorist concerns. The question you would ask yourself then is, is would you really want to add two lanes on both sides of a railroad track and encourage traffic to cross those streets in order to do that? It's a little different when you think about it from a different context, and I think it's worthwhile looking at both contexts as you consider what you might want to do there.
Right. And I'll just say a few things here. First of all, I've got, I've got three main bullet points here, and the first is, is when we talk about inconvenience and the impacts, and I recognize, and I appreciate Evelyn and Brenda and Randall, and Carolyn just left, but I appreciate that you guys came, because I do believe that you will be inconvenienced, and I'm not, I don't doubt that at all, and I don't want to minimize that at all, in addition to the residents of the 150 or so houses that you do. So I want to recognize that upfront and express, although I support this, the motion. I do appreciate and thank those citizens because, in advance, for being inconvenienced, but hopefully to, in the long run, see the great benefit that this provides. My second point is, is we talk about improving the community. Sometimes we talk and sometimes we take action. I see a lot of, right now, we're in the planning stages of a great downtown project, but it's all been based on, if you do this and provide this level of public funding, we'll provide this level of private funding. And one of the things that I have to really give the university credit for is that this is an entirely privately funded venture, and the impact that the improved neighborhood has is phenomenal. We talk about in our comp plan how we want to reuse infill development, redevelopment, use what we have, maintain existing properties. I really applaud Kansas Wesleyan for really doing that with their own dollars. Part of our strategic planning is that we put together a strategic plan, and a big thing on our list was, let's do what we can do to help our institutions of higher learning do more to attract students and retain them, and faculty as well. And I think that this provides another opportunity for us to step up, fulfill a goal on our strategic plan and in comp plans, and work with the community. And I'll echo the words of Commissioner Hardy when, it made a big difference to me when I saw that there was an opportunity to reverse the Osborne Street to a two-way, and that that mitigation was actually fairly favorable, and without any concern for public safety and those matters. So, and then just one last thing, I know that there was some, I sensed at least a level of distrust about the condition that may have, may or may not have been put upon, whether the east side and west side of the road were inseparable. And I would just say that if I'm looking at this from the railroad's point of view, the reason why they don't like people messing around, or why they probably would prefer no streets around any of their railroad tracks, is that if something interrupts that track or damages it or whatever, there's a lot of money involved in delays and having to fix those. So I think what they may, I would assume that they would look at making one side two-way instead of one-way on both sides, might create more of an opportunity for conflict on that roadway in their view, and so I can understand why the railroad might want you to do both sides of it if they were going to do it. And on that note, I'd like to thank the railroad for working with you guys and really providing this opportunity, so thank you for the opportunity to come.
Well, and I know how you folks that live on the south side are gonna miss if we vote for this, because I lived over there and used it every day. But the one thing that I always was afraid of was, I think there's a real lack of safety there, at least when I was driving that. There were buses along there all the time, kids getting off and on buses for game days and things like that, and I was always about half afraid to drive down there. So in that regard, I think it'll be much safer without it. That's what, so that's the way I'll be voting. We have a motion and a second on first reading ordinance number 16-10832, filed by Kansas Wesleyan requesting closure and vacation of the west side of South Fourth Street between Claflin and Cloud Street. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Four zero. Motion passed.
Your last item would just to give staff direction on what you'd like to see happen with Osborne Street. As we noted in 2013, when there was a replat approved and you agreed to vacate the west 14 feet of right-of-way for Osborne Street, that narrowed the pavement width to 29 feet. And the good news about Osborne Street is that, in terms of how it's used and the parking, those are things that can be looked at over time, but in terms of giving staff guidance is what you'd like to see happen with Osborne, the three options are to maintain the status quo as a one-way southbound street, to convert Osborne to two-way traffic with parking on the east side, or the third option would be to convert Osborne to two-way traffic with no parking allowed at all. So we'll, we've given you all the dimensions and information, so unless you have specific questions, it would be, your third item would be to give staff guidance on what you want to see happen as far as traffic flow on Osborne.
Good thing is, we've already had the discussion.
We've had this discussion. Is there any public comment on that?
Randall, home, Custer Street. Just a real short comment. I think you ought to strongly consider putting a controlled light at Osborne Street, because when you are headed south on, excuse me, on Highland Street right now, last week, I set through three light changes, complete light changes of Ninth Street, waiting for an opening to be able to turn left on to Cloud Street on Highland. I think that a light there that's controlled also would be a good idea, but in particular at Osborne Street, and one that is emergency vehicle-controlled also, so that it could be turned, so that the people in Osborne have a constant green till that emergency vehicle gets through. Because if they get tied up behind two or three cars in front of them, and there's cars parked on the side, they won't be able to get through and that. So please consider lighting that intersection, and I do appreciate a vote to make it two-way, seeing as you've done the other.
Okay. Thank you, Randall. Any public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, break back to the Commission for Action.
Well, it probably won't affect, I can do a discussion.
Well, I'll make the motion if we can discuss. I move that we amend the original condition of the replat approval to designate Osborne Street a two-way street with on-street parking allowed on the east side of the street, and on-street parking prohibited on the west side.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. To approve a motion to amend the original condition of replat approval to designate Osborne Street a two-way street. All those in favor say aye.
Discussion, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, discussion, sorry.
Yeah, it may be a question, right. How would we go about doing the appropriate studies to see if a controlled light, and I think the suggestions for the light there are excellent, at that intersection?
I'll bring Dan up to fill in the details, but it depends, you probably have a few options. One, you will definitely want to wait till you have the current, the streets set up now the way that you've approved, and then the engineering, from the engineering perspective, they'll want to think about the time of year that you'd wanted to conduct that study, and make sure you do it at the time that usually the most impactful results that you can use. The question probably then is, is that is, that would certainly be within a year, I would think, of the finishing or the completion of the project. But the question, the other question you have to ask yourself, and I don't think this is a topic that we've, I know that I haven't been a part of in discussing with Kansas Wesleyan, but generally speaking, if you find that there is a direct impact that causes a public investment in a street or intersection from related development, you have the ability to request as part of that, that you are reimbursed for that. And I don't think, they've talked about that, so that's new, and I just want to be sure everyone is aware of that. But first, you have a study, and Dan can let you know about what he thinks the study would cost, and then if there's an impact of that, you could, well, if you put a traffic signal in there, you could easily be $100,000, I would think.
Well, what's nice is we still have the one there. I mean, it's operating differently today, but it's still there. It's the same signal.
The poles?
Yeah, the same signal's still there.
Oh, we didn't take out the poles on Osborne yet?
We've got, we've got, we've got both on Cloud are still there.
Both on Cloud.
One on Osborne we might have taken out.
Okay, so, yeah.
There'd be some investment there.
Okay, so we'd have some infrastructure potentially. But now, you could choose, it's up to you- But now, you could choose, it's up to you as well, you could say, well, that's part of it, there are other pattern issues there that aren't related to the university, which is true. We just talked about all the cut-through, which has absolutely nothing to do with the university being there. So get a look at that and say, let's look at it, and whatever it is, you accept that if we need to make a change, that's something we will do with our own initiative and not burden Kansas Wesleyan with that later. So that's a reasonable option, both are reasonable options. I do think there is some argument that says if you're going to do it, and there is a charge, and you do want to charge back, there should be proportionate share if you wanted to go there just simply because a lot of the traffic issues have nothing to do with the university. So, so there's a lot of ways you can look at it. We'll monitor anyway, whatever, you know, we will monitor that anyway. So at some point, and when I say monitor, we can check traffic patterns and things like that. It wouldn't be a traffic study, but we can do counts at certain locations, we have the ability to do that to see if there are any red flags that might arise that cause us to want to do, to do an actual study. But if you want to affirmatively do a study, Dan, why don't you talk a little bit about what that might entail?
And if you could address, are there any studies that measure time to wait to make a turn?
Yeah, that's what a level of service study is really about. It's time, and it's time and average time for all the different legs. So they have to, whether you're in a certain level of service, or if you're, a lot of people are waiting a long time, you're in a really bad level of service. That's, and level of service is relative really to itself. So it's, A, of course, is really good, but is C really that bad? Salina might be, in Washington DC, it is not bad at all. So it's, they're all relative somewhat. The warrants for a traffic signal, there's nine of them. So there's quite, I mean, it's eight-hour volumes, four-hour volumes, peak volume, pedestrian volume, school crossing, whether it's a coordinated signal system, crash experience, or roadway network, and intersection near a grade crossing. So some of those don't really even apply here, but some of them, you basically look at all those warrants and see
Does it have to meet just one of those, or?
Correct.
Was it originally there then because of the school crossing? And that's the way they were doing school crossings?
Yeah, I think that's about, we looked back at the history of it, why, when it went in or why it was there, because it's never met the volumes or any of these. But school crossing is the most logical reason to have been used years ago. But before the MTCD and before the warrants were there, I mean, lots of signals went into Salina and all over the US that may not have been necessary. So it's, as you saw downtown years ago, they took a lot of them out that were not warranted. And we have many today that are warranted, so it's just, it's a big change when you take them out. It's more, if they were never there, you wouldn't know. But since they're there, then it's a huge change, and nobody wants to remove a signal, so you know how that goes.
You learn real fast, it doesn't matter where you're at in town, and it doesn't matter what you change, whether it's a sign, a signal, whatever it might be. You will find out that it affects someone negatively.
Oh, sure.
Have we ever done a traffic study for a one-block stretch?
Traffic, what do you mean, for this, you're talking like this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean
You could, for one intersection.
Sure, just for, it's an intersection study, so it's, we can take the warrants and look at them, and, you know, you go there during the peak hour and see what the stacking is and how long cars are waiting, and then that's what Wilson and Company did originally.
This is another case of adapting, is the way I look at it. If I'm driving over towards Osborne and I see four or five cars
You're not going to go there, right.
backed up, I'm just going to go straight.
You're going to go to the next one, yes.
I'm not a robot, and neither is anybody else driving down that street.
What if you're trying to go to that grade school?
You go another block.
That gets irritating after a while.
Well, you learn to be adaptable when you live in the core.
I understand that, but you're going to have kids crossing, you're going to have people turning.
It's a busy, it's a busy.
I'm much more into preventing.
Okay. You're thinking about the worst possible scenario, game day in schools, in church, in schools, and all of that happening at the same time, and it doesn't. You know, you're not, you're never going to have a, an intersection that is impossible to deal with. It'll be a little bit of an inconvenience if you really, if you truly want to go there. I just avoid the whole intersection on game day, why even bother?
Right, but that's, I'm just saying, at some point, the study needs to be done to make sure the intersection is safe and usable.
Well, I think that that study generally, I mean, generally, if we look at it the way we did the intersection over in Eagle Gate or whatever the name of that was.
Eagle Crest.
Yeah.
Yep. It's really just who you want to do it and when, and like
That came from, that came from a request of, hey, we feel this is unsafe, and if I'm not mistaken, even from actual traffic accidents that may even have
Correct, right.
triggered some of that. So I mean, I think that it won't take us long to figure out that somehow there's a major difference on there. Maybe there's something that we can do in an intermediate step.
Right, you'll get complaints, you'll get wrecks, I mean, there's a school there, and there's children there. So you won't take anybody long to let us know if there's an issue there.
Right.
What would be the proposed timing of the change if this is approved?
I think I can speak to that. From Kansas Wesleyan's perspective, they've got a construction cycle they're wanting to hit, so it will be immediate upon second reading.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Engineer. I have a motion and a second.
Ready for the question?
Do we remember what we motioned and seconded on? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you very much for your patience and waiting and
Oh, we're there already?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, it just takes a while.
If I may, Madam Mayor, and just report, Commissioner, if that's the executive session resolution, I think we had been possibly a little optimistic in our earlier estimate.
Yeah, I was looking at this, wow.
Yeah. You think 20 or
I've heard that before.
Well, if everybody probably wants to make a, take a break before convening,
Good idea.
Then 20, 25 minutes might be, 25 would be appropriate.
I love optimistic estimates. Madam Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for 25 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene at 7:45 PM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we're adjourned. Seven fourteen.